All right. We still have people logging on, so we do have a public hearing as I'm waiting. Giving people the opportunity to log on. If there's anybody present, I'm going to call the public hearing open. Have not done so yet, but if there's anybody present that would like to speak for public hearing, this is with regard to the local law making the charter and the administrative code gender neutral. So we've got one, two, three pages worth of information about going from gender-specific terminology to more accepting terminology in the city charter. Let's see. We are at 7:03, so if there's anybody present, I will now officially call. You're not starting the meeting, but we will call the public hearing officially open. Today is October 20th of 2020. And let me double check. Devin, are you ready?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. So we are recording. Public hearing is officially open. And this is with regard to potential changes to the City of Cortland Charter with the intention to make the language gender neutral. This is specific to the public hearing. I'm getting some questions and as usual, we will have the opportunity for public comments. I'm going to ask for you to hold off until we close the public hearing. And then you can put your request. I'll just ask for you to put your name into the chat. And the chat is set up so participants can talk only with the host. That is intentional. So you can wait a little bit for the public comments, but right now the public hearing regarding changing the language of the charter. One, please. Just confirming we have somebody for public comments, so this is specific to the potential charter change. Second call, anybody that would like to speak regarding the potential change to the charter with regard to language and make it gender neutral. Third and final call, charter change. All right. There's some people making requests for public comments. But since I have not seen anybody regard to the potential change to the charter regarding language and becoming gender neutral, we had third and final call. I will call the public hearing officially closed. And at this point, I'll ask people to please rise if you're able. Let me try to mute everybody. For the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we call a meeting to order. I'd like to start off with the opportunity for public comments. We've got a couple of people signed up. And as a reminder, anybody that would like to speak, ask that your name be on your Zoom profile, that you have your camera on so we can see you and envision to hear you, and that your comments be limited to three minutes in length. And they are addressed to the council and the mayor, for to the council about issues or topics that are directly relevant to the city. Our first speaker, Chris Benke. Chris, welcome.
Well, I'm Chris Valentine Benke, and I'm here tonight to talk about an event in my neighborhood that occurred on Saturday, October 17th. But to note's secret, that there are tensions between the Black Lives Matter group and the Back the Blue support group. On Saturday, members of the Back the Blue support group took their motorcade, publicized as a support of local law enforcement, and took it to my neighborhood and targeted community member Melissa Kaiser's home. They honked, they yelled, they harassed, and they interrupted our quiet neighborhood on a Saturday. Back the Blue used part of their rally not to support the local police as they publicized their point, but to come to my neighborhood. Why? To track down my neighbor, vocal Black Lives Matter activist, to show her that they know where she lives, to show her that they know where her child lives, to disrupt her and my neighborhood, to intimidate her, or to silence her. I can only guess at their motivation, and I can't say that my guesses reflect positively on the group. But what concerns me most is that this group has escalated the local tensions to dangerous levels by approaching a dissident's home. If Melissa was speaking at a rally or a protest and they arrived to express their First Amendment rights, fine, but they tracked her, a private citizen, to her house and applied intimidation tactics. I feel that my neighborhood is less safe as a result of their actions, and I can only imagine what Melissa's child feels. I ask you, do we want this in Cortland? Do we want Cortland to be like other areas with citizens frightened in their homes from speaking out? Do we want it to be acceptable to track dissenters to their homes? Does the city and the Cortland Police Department condone this behavior, which is ostensibly in the Cortland Police Department's name? I'm totally not opposed to Back the Blue using a motorcade rally to express their First Amendment rights, and I'm not insensitive to their desire to recognize law enforcement doing good work. But this is not the way, and it's not acceptable. I ask that the city and police department make a public statement condemning this behavior, letting Back the Blue know that while they may appreciate their support, they don't appreciate the tracking, doxing, and intimidation tactics displayed in their name. If you don't, if they don't, residents of a city like myself might assume that the CPD appreciates Back the Blue's tactics in harassing our neighbor and neighborhood. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Next speaker, Melissa Kaiser.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to kind of piggyback on what Chris said. And typically, I don't write things down, but this is something that's very serious that I want everyone to think about seriously and understand where as a private citizen, how in history it has been when white supremacist racist men show up at a black woman's house in the hopes of intimidation. So on Saturday, like Chris said, I was not home, but I received several calls and texts from my neighbors and my husband saying that there was a commotion going on outside my home. And I was out running errands when people from Back the Blue and bearing Trump flags came outside my house. They were blaming whores outside my home. They were in fact doxing me, and they were in fact trying to intimidate me. They were trying to harass me. And what it did didn't just impact me, but it impacted my family and it impacted my neighbors. The other thing that people probably don't know about me is that I have an autistic son who is incredibly sensitive to noise that had to deal with these weak little men expressing themselves in a way that is vile and inappropriate. But I have some questions of my own. I would like to know which part of this act was in support of the police. I want to know if it was the part where they targeted my home as a member of Black Lives Matter? I want to know if it was the part where they scared my child, who wants to know if they're going to be coming back? And I want to know if it was the part that, you know, they disturbed my neighbors? Or minor direct domestic terrorism is now considered acceptable as a part of your First Amendment rights? But I also echo Chris where I want to know where the local police stand in this. I want to know if they continue to stand in solidarity with a group whose motives are just purely political in nature. They do not actually support law enforcement. Nothing that they did outside my home with my child and my family inside of it was supporting law enforcement. And I want to know if the police are willing to do their jobs well when it comes to prosecuting the people who are acting criminally on their behalf? And yet, doxing is illegal when it's used as harassment. I just look it up. And according to our local sheriff, it should be considered a felony if somebody does it against police officers. So I want to know if the police are going to be making a statement and if they're going to be separating themselves from Back the Blue? Or are they going to continue to accept their support? That is my time.
Thank you, Melissa. And typically, we are not using public comments as time for interact, but this will be discussed. Next speaker, Beau Harbin.
Thank you, Mayor Tobin. I am standing here in front of the wall today to speak to agenda item number 19, which is regards to political signage in the City of Cortland under the current zoning. Recently, myself and many members in our community have been cited for having too many political signs under zoning code 300-113-9 by the code enforcement officer. He is right in submitting those violation notices to me and my neighbors because according to the zoning, we are out of compliance. However, I intend to remain out of compliance for the rest of this election cycle because I believe it is within my First Amendment rights and the First Amendment rights of everyone within Cortland to express their political views. I provided a detailed explanation of this to the code enforcement officer, to the mayor, and to all members of the common council. But just want to hit on a few highlights. There has been significant precedents through the Supreme Court, Court of Appeals, and also the New York State General Counsel, Legal Memorandum U-02, which makes it very clear that the city needs to have a overwhelming need for an overwhelming significant government interest in order to limit our First Amendment rights in this way, particularly in the area of political speech. This is one of the most highly strict structures that the Supreme Court has placed on the freedom of speech and our First Amendment privileges. And the city needs to make sure that it has a significant government interest. And I believe that two signs in somebody's front yard where they're not obstructing traffic, they're not impinging the free flow of traffic or causing any other disruption significantly interferes with our First Amendment rights and does not provide a significant government interest. The Institute for Free Speech and their discussion of the Ruben V. Feeblebode case from 2013 here in New York states that while it is true that the government may limit political signs if it is in the public interest, such as when signs create safety concerns, any such regulations must be tailored to survive strict scrutiny in court. That is, they must take care not to overly infringe on First Amendment political expression rights by being carefully drafted to address only compelling state interests. And I believe in that in this case, much in the Feeblebode case, that there is no safety interest involving political yard signs, which merits infringing of some of our most basic rights enshrined in our Constitution. Therefore, I'm asking the common council, the mayor, the city council to take a look at our zoning code. And I would ask a couple of things of the common council. First of all, I would ask a moratorium on any further enforcement of zoning codes 300-113 subsection 9. Allow all Portland County or all Portland City residents to express their First Amendment rights in this election cycle. I would also seek to have a removal, one last second. I'm also seeking the removal completely from the City of Portland zoning code of the offending section 113-9. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe you submitted a document that has been shared, correct?
I have, thank you.
Very good. Our next speaker, Brittany Van Loon.
Hi, everybody. I'm just jumping on really quick to give my two cents about COVID and what's been going on in Cortland. I know that it is a virus and it is completely unavoidable, but I really do think it's time that we start thinking about sending the college kids home. I don't think that some of them are respecting our community. And I think that at home, maybe I'm thinking too highly of them, but I would hope that they would hold themselves on a higher level of accountability at their own homes because it is their community and they wouldn't want to show disrespect to their family or their neighbors at home. We need to take care of our community. We have enough to deal with here in Cortland right now, and I don't think another lockdown is what our community needs. It is not too late to act on behalf of our community, and I really hope that this is something that we take into consideration in protecting our community and our members. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany. Looking to see if there's anybody else that would like the opportunity to talk to council during public comments. Oh, I've got some people in the waiting room. Thought I had everybody in. One moment. Mr. Jeffrey Constantino, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm here to oppose the proposal to close Groton Ave. on Halloween night. I believe that's item number 20. I own Pontillo's Pizzeria, and on Saturdays, especially Halloween, we're extremely busy. And this would cause a great hardship upon, you know, my business, my staff, and many customers. So I don't think that's a good idea, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, Jeff. Free. Is there anybody else present that would like to take advantage of the opportunity for public comments? All right, seeing none. Like to go to the mayor's report, and we have a guest that instead of putting on the agenda, I would like to have the opportunity, because there have been some recent developments, like to have the opportunity to exceed time during the mayor's report. Mr. Frederick Pierce is in charge of information for SUNY Portland. I believe he has some information to share with the general public. Fred, thank you for being here. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. I appreciate this opportunity to once again come back and fill you in on what's going on. Today, we had a visitor that we didn't know was coming until yesterday, which is pretty common. The chancellor of the SUNY's system came to campus today where he and President Bitterbaum announced that they would be extending our study in place period for another two weeks. And this was based on the fact that our caseloads of COVID in our student population hadn't gone down sufficiently. It had, and if you, over the last several days, and I should back up a little bit and tell you more about what we had been doing regarding testing. When we went into the study in place, which takes, gets, eliminates in-person classroom instruction, closes the Student Life Center, provides no-campus activities, takeout meals at the meeting halls. We also began an incredible amount of testing, mandatory testing of all students. That was made possible by a new process through SUNY Upstate. We've done more than 7,000 tests on campus. So all our students have been tested once, and more than once. Our faculty staff are getting tested as well. And we knew when we began testing that our numbers were going to go up because that's what we were trying. The way you fight COVID is you first have to discover where it is in your community. Well, we found out, and it's, there's a significant amount in our students, both on and off campus. Over the last several days, we're finally seeing the results of the clampdown. We've had a steady reduction in the number of new cases and in the number of active cases. So as our students are getting out of quarantine and getting better, there aren't as many new cases replacing them. Our rate of infection has gone down. Just two weeks ago, when we were peaking with cases, it was about 6% of all our tests were positive. Now it's down below 2%, and it's been a steady curve. So the decision was made that we should stay the course, which is going to be very difficult for students. It will be difficult for faculty staff, and it will be difficult for all you folks as well. But I do want to, and this touches on a comment that the woman made about sending the students home. We can't send the students home because we are under orders from the State Department of Health to keep our students in Cortland. They look at it from a statewide perspective that you have an area where there is significant amount of the virus. If you start to export it and send it to other communities, families, you begin to expose people that wouldn't get exposed beforehand because we'd be putting our students in situations where they wouldn't be threatened with suspension or disciplinary action for failing to follow guidelines. So from the State Department of Health and the SUNY chancellor reiterated that today, we are to do whatever we can, even if our students are online and bored out of their skulls, although we are keeping them very busy with work, we're not sending them home. That's what Oney Anta did, and there are, the repercussions are still in the communities they went back to. We noted the two-week periods of pauses work. This worked elsewhere, and we see it beginning to work here. So we're asking our students and we're asking the community to just have a little bit more patience. I will share that we do have students who don't follow the regulations or get careless, and we do discipline. We have suspended, and it's not like a high school suspension. At college, we send you home and you don't get any refunds for anything. You lose out on all that money. So it's a big, it's a big penalty, and we've suspended, I think, about 56 students so far. That's more than we've, and that's just for COVID violations. That's more than we've suspended for the last four years combined. So we are taking a hard approach. Our students don't seem to be holding huge parties. What we think what appears to have led to our spike was more COVID fatigue, which now the Health Department will tell you that's what we're seeing in the community elsewhere in Cortland and in the United States as well. We've just all been doing this for so long. So we're redoubling our efforts, and we're optimistic that the worst is over and we're coming out. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions anyone asks.
I'd like to open the floor up for council for questions. And if there are questions from the public, if you want to put those into the chat, it will come directly to me, and we'll take it from there. But let's start, Troy Beckwith.
And Mr. Pierce?
Hi there.
One of my questions are concerned, and I know it's probably a little early, but is there any proposals, what's going to happen after the first semester? Are the kids going to be allowed to go home? If they are, when are they going to be able to come back? Are you going to allow them to come back?
Well, the plan right now is the students will go home for Thanksgiving, and then they will not be returning. Once they go home for this semester, they are gone. The only students who will not be going home are those who have an active COVID infection. We will keep those here in isolation until they are done with their periods. Next semester is a question that we are all very eager to have answers to, as is all of our students and faculty. I can tell you that the SUNY chancellor has made it clear and is in discussions with all the campus presidents that it is going to be a uniform return system-wide for all 64 campuses. So it's being decided at a level above us with input from all of the various campuses. It is likely that if students come back, they will be coming back a little bit later than normal to get through some of the winter, some of the winter weeks. And there will be no breaks, no spring break where they go off and then come back. But again, right now, we are all waiting for a formal plan. And when we have one, you know, I'm sure that the chancellor will publicize it, and we'll publicize it as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Bennett?
First off, Fred, thank you so much for speaking tonight.
It's your problem, John.
Well, I'm not, I do not think so bad about the students as some people have said because to begin with, everybody is doing this for the first time. There was no playbook for this. Now, in saying that, what I'm going to hope for is, number one, that we all knock on wood and hope that from December through January that the cases countrywide and here in the Northeast do not rise. But in saying that, my hope would be that the chancellor does decide that when students come back overall to all the SUNY's for the second semester, that there is testing right on site as soon as they come back. I know for a fact, my daughter worked at Cornell, and that was done immediately at Cornell as soon as any student came onto campus and they checked into the dorms, they had to go get tested immediately. So I'm hoping that as SUNY moves, that I think would put the community much more at ease. But again, too, I want to thank you for coming to council and speaking tonight, sir.
And John, I do want to reassure you that a portion of the plan that the chancellor has does involve testing students before they come to campus. They're trying to figure out how to do it, and of course, as with everything at SUNY, who's going to pay for it?
That's...
But it is something that I think the presidents of all the campuses have bought into, and the chancellor definitely wants to see. It's just a matter of us, everybody figuring out how it's going to get done.
Yeah, I would have said the logistics would be easy.
Nothing about this is easy. We're learning. But no, you've got a good point, and I think on this one, we can actually take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
And Fred, you know, there's two people that came in with the same question as John was asking or just prior to when he started asking. And that was the decision-making process for this semester, why students were not tested prior to the start of the fall semester. If you could address that. If you could address that, please.
Well, I could, I will start it by, there's a couple reasons. The first was, when we developed the plans for the fall semester, it was shortly after the spring semester had ended. And at that point, we, Washington, even some of the AEX firms were thinking worse with aspects of COVID. We shut down and that it was going to, we were going to have things under control. And, you know, it didn't turn out to be that way. That was the first thing. The second thing was, the, one of the reasons we are able to do testing of the magnitude that we're doing now is because of the technology and the system I mentioned the SUNY Upstate is developing and the partnership with it. Prior to that, testing was expensive, but we would be willing to foot the price. The problem is, for our processing of tests, the delay was so long that it made it potentially worthless. By the time you would get, you'd have to keep everybody in quarantine for a week and a half just to find out that they didn't have it, which is the majority of people. And it turned out not to be, it's, it's a good thing to do when you, when you can, but it is, SUNY as we go, for example, they were able to do it. They had access to a quicker turning, testing turnaround than we did. And they closed, they closed down before we did, because their cases still went up. So it's, the decisions were made based on the best opportunities and information we had at hand at the time. I think enough has changed in terms of the process of testing and in terms of lessons learned. What we've learned about COVID, what we've learned about our, the dynamics of our community, that this is something that we definitely wanted to do next time around.
Very good. The next question, and I don't know how much we can get into in terms of playbook or plans for the future. I think you touched a little bit upon that, but if you can expand in terms of testing, or what other steps is the college planning?
Well, there will be, again, we don't know yet. A lot of it is going to be out of our hands. It's going to be what, what the SUNY system tells us we're doing. But we anticipate we are going to have some online courses. We currently are renting a lot of space off-campus for students in order to decrease the density in our residence halls. But also, we're using it for quarantine and isolation space. We will be continuing to rent that space out, so we have it. We are hopeful, we know that the SUNIAC, our Athletic League has already canceled winter sports. Sorry, Mayor. But we're hopeful we may be able to in some form get spring sports. But so much of it is going to depend on what happens with the pandemic and the decisions made by SUNY as they interpret the information they're given. That's a long, convoluted way of saying, I don't know.
Well, there's time to spare now and then. And I know the discussions took place all summer long before the start of August, the start of the fall semester at the end of August. And conversations are ongoing. Hopefully, it's helpful for the general public to know that when we talk about discussions, it's not just in SUNY. There's been county representation, city representation. When I say county, we're talking about the county health department and legislators as well. And law enforcement has been at the table all along as well. So the ongoing conversations, and we're all trying to do what's best. And it's a portion of our community. So the college is an employer, and students, when they are here, they are members of our community, the same as everybody else. And we are going to hold everybody to the same expectations in terms of behavior. And we're going to make sure that we're doing everything we can to encourage appropriate behavior and discourage inappropriate behavior. Counsel, any further questions for Mr. Pierce? Very good. Fred, thank you for being here. We'll consider-
Well, thank you for giving me, thank you for giving me the opportunity. It's always good to talk with you.
Reminder, you do have, people can access the college directly if there's concerns or complaints, correct?
Oh, absolutely. We have, and please, I encourage everyone to go to our, go to our, it's, it's our Study In Place website. It's just a modified version of the site that we've had up. There's links there to our dashboard and the SUNY system dashboard, which will tell you, give you some of the metrics we're looking at in terms of cases and a better idea of where things are going. And you'll also find a link to a form that you can use to make a report of if you see some sort of activity. And when you do do a report, the more detailed information you can provide, the better the chances are that we can do a successful investigation and take action.
Very good.
Thank you once again.
Fred, thank you. We do have on the agenda an opportunity for proclamation for Extra Mile Day. And Extra Mile Day is November 1st. What I'd like to do is to hold off until our next meeting, November 3rd, which obviously is after the 1st. But I'd like to have further discussion with council about submission of names for people to recognize. And what we do with Extra Mile Day is we like to talk about some people in the community who have gone above and beyond to help make the community stronger. So I'd like to hold off on that one, and I will move on to the minutes from our last meeting. And our last council meeting was October 6th. And we have a motion to consider approving and filing the minutes from our last council meeting. Let's see, Bill Carpenter and a second from John Bennett. Are there any issues or questions regarding the minutes from our last meeting? And I'll ask council, remember to unmute yourselves, please, before the vote, because we need, you can ask for the visual wave, but we need the audio as well. So all those in favor of final minutes as is, please stay in way by.
Aye.
And those opposed? Carries. Final minutes. I covered Fred earlier on. We have the presentation on the 2019 audited financial statements. I am looking, trying to figure, who do I have present to talk about the financial statements this evening? That would, that would, Mayor, that would be Keely Heinz. You will find her right below Kat McCarthy, where she's logged in.
Not on my computer.
Okay, it's, uh-
Keely Heinz, see you. Are you ready?
I am, and I think I was able to unmute myself.
You are, we can hear you. Yeah, you're next to Kat McCarthy, so you can look to your left and wait. She's right next to you.
All right, thank you, Mac. So I am Keely Heinz, I'm a principal with Bonneville out of the Syracuse office. For those of you that have been involved in this process in the past, you're accustomed to seeing Randy Schumpert, one of my partners out of our Rochester office. And this year, pre-COVID, we had made a decision to work on transitioning this job to our Syracuse office. Geographically, it just makes more sense. I also specialize in all government and municipal work 12 months of the year. So Randy did some consulting this year, but basically handed it off to me. And unfortunately, couldn't make it due to a conflict we were about to pull this year. Unfortunately, I have not had the pleasure of actually meeting any of you folks employed or involved in the government. So hopefully, that'll change in the near future, going forward, the future audit. Obviously, this was a bit of a non-traditional audit in the sense that, yes, we did perform everything remotely, providing information and questions back and forth through daily phone calls and using a safe portal to share documents that were insecure. And a big thank you to Mac and his team, because it's been back in an audit in that type of environment where those challenges is never easy. So again, Mac, thank you for your help in getting through that, because it certainly is not ideal for anybody. Hopefully, you've all received a copy of the audited financial statements. I'd like to put you to page one, which is our independent auditor's report. And if you flip over to page two, you received an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide when performing an audit. So that is the type of report that the board is looking for on all of the opinion units. And then you will see something that does not appear in your reports on a regular basis is an emphasis of matters paragraph following the opinion paragraph. And that has to do with a restatement that we have to make to the meeting prior to your financial statement. And I will speak to that in greater light as we work through the document. But basically, the professional standards require that we highway that within our report and say, yes, this is the correction that was made, a change that we made to those numbers back here, but it doesn't contribute to our financial statements. Pages four through 17 is your management's discussion and analysis. So that is where management, Mac and his team can provide some additional context, similar terms explaining what has been going on at the city and future factors and events that are affecting the city coming up. So that's an un-audited portion of the financial statements that is required for a financial statement presented in accordance with GAOSE. And you folks can take a look at that on the call. On page 18 and 19 are what we call our government-wide financial statements. So for those of you who may not be familiar with this, this is a set of financial statements that will include all long-term assets and all long-term liabilities. So it is a full accrual basis. So if you were to think about any sort of for-profit entity or any type of business, this would be the presentation that is consistent with that and that captures all of your activities. So when you take a look at your total assets and liabilities, you're left with a negative net position of $41 million. This is not unusual. Especially given the fact that your OPEB liability, your long-term OPEB liability, is $61 million. That is what's causing that negative net position. So again, typical, there isn't many counties, cities, towns, villages that do not have a negative net position on the government side of your financial statement. The takeaway from that is that although that post-employment benefit obligation is a really large number, it does affect that, that look of your financial statement. You really continue to pay as you go. Nothing really changes. You pay for those benefits, for those retirees and their qualified spouses as you would and had, as you have in the past. Flipping over to page 20 is your balance sheet. This is your fund financial statement. So this is where you will find your general funds, steward funds, capital project funds, and then accumulation of what we call your total non-natured fund. Your general fund is probably what you folks look for the most in terms of how you are budgeting and how the general operations of the city are going. One of the things that I wanted to point out is that you have a total fund balance at the bottom of the page of about just under $4.5 million. Last year, if you were to compare the financial statements from last year to this year, you guys heard about $4.9. So you had a small reduction in fund balance. But where the change really took place was, previously, your fund balance was predominantly recorded as restricted. And if you look on your own at some point on page 31 in the footnote, we provided definitions of all of the fund balance qualifications. And we spent some time this year, specifically discussing with Mac and Lori, whether that fund balance or equity or a lot of other terms, whether that really met the definition of restricted. And the concern came about that if we had called all of that restricted fund balance, it had given the illusion that perhaps the city had spent part of resources and funds that were restricted. And in fact, in reality, that is not what happened. And really, those funds were not meeting the definition of restricted. And really, they're committed. So those are funds that have been designated for purposes as determined by the board and/or a combination of previous boards. And really, in the grand scheme of things, those funds are accessible to the city and would not require a change or a modification by a third party that's restricting those resources. So what that really means is you're in a good position. You have those resources available if you needed to pass legislation and release some of those commitments. Moving forward to page 33. As I mentioned to you when we were talking about the auditor's report, there was a correction of an error, and that is described fully in footnote four on that page 33. And basically, what had happened was capital projects as you are currently aware span multiple years, and expenditures are incurred often over that period of time. Expenditures were being incurred, and what had happened was there was some confusion in terms of at what point were those expenditures going to trigger a source of revenue or a source of debt to fund those. So in the prior year, when we touched and looked at capital projects, those expenditures were legit, they had been incurred, they were for the project, they were allowable within the parameters of the project. What had happened was management had approved a revenue and a receivable, basically saying, yeah, this many expenditures, we think that we're going to get revenue for this, and we're going to record those receivables, we can be a path to receive that. When in fact, some of the proceeds, or what was going to fund those expenditures was really proceeds from debt and not revenue. So if receivable and revenue should have been reported, and we really should have just waited for the proceeds of the debt to come in on the book. So that's basically describing what was changed in your prior financial statements and the current year's financial statements. This is what's describing what was changed. Flipping over to page 52. Footnote 19 describes subsequent events. Essentially, footnote four and 19 is where you'll see the changes. Again, if you were to compare the financial statements from the prior year to the current year, we fully describe any bank renewals and loan agreements that have been entered into by the city during 2020, so subsequent to 12/31/19. And then we go on to explain and acknowledge COVID going on. So ultimately, everybody, 12/31/19 and financial statements are acknowledging that the full impact and financial ramifications related to COVID-19 are not measurable or determined at this point. A caveat has to be included in the financial statement. Flipping over to page 61. This is our report describing the results of our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. So this is where we are required to communicate to those churches of government, which is your city council, any sort of material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. About three quarters of the way down the page, you will see that a material weakness is described as a deficiency or a accumulation of deficiencies that result in- described as a deficiency or a simulation of deficiencies that result in a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement in the financial statements will occur and go undetected or not corrupted timing by management. So by this definition, if we have to propose an audit adjustment, meaning that we have to, based upon our audit procedures, tell management, we think this number should change, this is what should be reported, and they agree to it, we have to then communicate that to you both because it was a material amount that was reported and we've received management's agreement, those corrections have been made and are reflected within the financial statements, but we have to communicate that clearly to you both. And we'll get to that page shortly. Flipping over to page sixty-three, this is our report on our audit form in accordance with UNIFROM guidance. So this is the single audit. Given the fact that you folks expended an excess of seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of federal expenditures during the twenty-nineteen year, this component of the audit is required. We audited the CDDG program as a major program, so that was the focus of our tasking. And when we conduct our single audit tasking, the focus is really primarily on two components, one being on the internal control over compliance and the other being on compliance. So we have to determine what federal requirements are directed material to the city when they receive this funding, in this case, from CDDG. And we have to determine that you in fact were compliant with any requirements that they laid out for you, how you should spend it, when you should spend it, reporting requirements, anything like that. And then we're also required to evaluate your internal control over compliance. And that really is a two-pronged approach as well. We have to consider that you have designed and created an appropriate internal control environment and that you've developed procedures to mitigate risk of being not in compliance. And then you have to actually put them in place in practice. So we actually come in and test that those controls were operating effectively, and that will help mitigate the risk for non-compliance. I have in your report that with regards to your single audit and the tasking with the CDDG funding, there were no comments to share or concerns with regards to either compliance or internal control over compliance. So that's great. And then page sixty-seven is a nice one-page condensed sheet that explains the results of the audit with regards to findings, identifies that major program. And then page sixty-eight through seventy, identifies the two findings that we have as a result of adjustments having to be made. The first one has to do with a lease arrangement with a street lighting project. Basically, what had happened was that activity was being handled by an escrow agent. In the end, despite the fact that the escrow agent was handling that, those transactions needed to be picked up on the city's books. So we took care of that. Management has agreed to that. And again, given that that was a temporary situation with that particular project, we would not foresee such for this to be a finding in the future. Overall, my recommendation is to ensure that representation from, you know, Matt's office or Matt's consults be included when working with maybe some of these unique projects in the future, just to ensure that that activity is being recorded as it occurs. And then the second finding was having to do with partly what was linked to the prior period adjustment. So again, tracking those expenditures for the capital projects. You both have identified what the expenditures are for the project, but really ensuring that you know whether those specific expenditures are going to be funded through both sources, federal funding, state funding, through borrowing on a certification note or a serial bond, whatever the case may be, because sometimes with some of the funding through EFC, it's very specific for what benchmarks and what order funding will become available. So the recommendation would be to just continue to make sure that not only are you tracking the actual expenditures incurred on those projects, but that you're properly identifying and linking it to how that specific expenditure will be funded. Any questions on the financial statement?
Counsel, any questions? The, I'd like to point out, just when we were speaking earlier about the lighting project, basically, we had to put money in escrow in case we did not get the project done in time. And this was the retrofitting, upgrading of all our streetlights. And we were able to complete that, I believe, this month. We're finalizing the paperwork on that. That was a major project that will be, in addition to a financial cost savings for the city, in terms of decreasing our electrical costs, a green event as well. We're much more efficient in terms of using energy. And people may have noticed that if you travel outside the city at night and you look back, there's a lot less ambient light that's being lost. But thank you for helping us work through that in terms of making sure we're lining up the dollars appropriately, which is always an important part of any project.
Absolutely. And then if there are no other specific questions, just while I have you, I wanted to share something of significance to all New York State governments at this point. I know, again, you know, for the reference, the COVID fatigue, and I know we're all feeling it in many ways, but one of the things that I wanted to make sure that the city council and Mayor Tilden were aware of is that effective April first, 2021, the city will be required to have put in place a pandemic operations plan, which will involve determining and defining who's going to be your essential employees and non-essential employees, and that you have proper levels of PPE. And we have a one-page summary that I will share with the mayor and Matt, that he can forward that to you. We're available to answer any questions on that, any concerns. We've done a little bit of work with some of your counterparts of other cities and counties that have started to pull their plans together. But really, I would like to encourage all of you to, again, try not to think of it as, oh, here's another thing I have to do so that the city can be in compliance, but really try to look at it as an opportunity to be ready to prevent if another shutdown happens or, you know, for upper spaces or something like this again. I think governments have, in recent years, a lot of times talking about disaster recovery or how to handle an invasion in a public building and things like that, but never really talking about or preparing for communicable PPE. So this has really shed some light on an area that folks have not previously really thought about. So I just wanted to remind you folks that that is coming up. And although April feels far away, it is going to come up fast. And I'll share that summary that our firm has put together to provide our clients with some assistance and just, again, reminding folks that it'll be here before you know it.
Yep, you are absolutely correct. And we have had conversations about what we need to do, the same way that we actually have been working on hazard mitigation plans, which, interesting timing, and hazard mitigation plans are all encompassing. So kudos to the city staff because in addition to dealing with the pandemic, we are talking about taking what we're learning. We've been keeping detailed notes, I believe, across the board so we can use that going forward for future planning. And we're also talking about hazard mitigation that involves just about any type of event. And that is not just the city, it's actually being done with all municipalities throughout the county. But our staff has taken on quite the burden at this point. But Kili, thank you for the reminder in that.
My pleasure.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Kili Hines from council? Hey, knocked it out of park, great job.
Thank you very much. And again, I hope to meet you all in person next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then that brings us to our next agenda item, which will be consideration of a resolution to accept the 2019 audited financial statements. Looking for a motion to consider from Mr. John Bennett. Do you have a second, Mr. Bill Carpenter, discussion? Carry none. And again, as a reminder, make sure, counsel, your microphones are on and give a wave verbal and visual. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion carries. I don't know if I said this earlier, but I believe we're at six, oh, I think we have two absent, I'm on a certain bell. Kili, thank you so much. If you want to stick around, we're going to talk about a rabbit, but don't feel required to.
You have a good day, everyone.
You too. Agenda item number four, our resolution to approve an exotic pet permit application for a rabbit or a individual in the community, motion to consider. Tom Michael, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion.
Brian, I have to believe that the college is in support about this, and I'm sure you have guidelines when it comes to pets in the building.
Yes, I don't, I don't see any need for us to micromanage. Any questions for Tom, on rabbits in general?
If you recall, we passed one earlier with another student, so.
Very good. No further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? And another furball in the community, very good. Agenda item number five is consideration of a resolution to approve a street closure request on Rotten Avenue. And I'll ask for a motion to consider.
Brian, I'm going to add a four, I'm not going to put a motion forward on this. I'm assuming if somebody else wants to, they can. But could I have a minute to explain that?
Just a second.
It's not strictly the Third Ward, but quite a bit it is in the Third Ward. I realized that as of October fourteenth, this CDC has said that traditional trick-or-treaty this year would be considered a very high-risk behavior, and they recommended against it. So that itself, I think, lends us that we don't want to really be in support of something that is considered at risk. And the second thing, and they're both equally valid in my opinion, is the impact this will have on businesses. We have some businesses that are scrambling to hang on through this pandemic. And Friday and certainly Saturday evenings are important to them. We heard one businessman speak to it earlier in the meeting. I just, I understand what he's trying to do, I just, I can't support it.
And the official request is for the closure from Woodruff to Glen Street, which basically would be the city line, and to Woodruff would be close to Otter Creek. Some people may be more familiar with that intersection there, New Bern Davis. So a little bit of discussion, but we do not have a motion on the floor, which is acceptable, that is intention of council, but for discussion.
Well, I could comment based on the way the meeting went two weeks ago with Bruce's comment, but Bruce, I respect you knowing your word and having lived in it as long as you have, so I'm going to support you in this endeavor. And I wish you had supported me two weeks ago.
Well, I understand, Tom, we just, we just asked the table to see if we could work things out in it. Sometimes things resolve themselves, as I recall, that was withdrawn, and I don't think we would have had the support had it showed up tonight anyhow, but that was withdrawn and it was.
It was.
The outcome of what you wanted, so.
Yes.
I wasn't, I was, I'll just let you know, and anybody else, I didn't support it the way it was written. I did support giving them two weeks to see if they could come up with some kind of solvable solution, which apparently was unable to occur, and it worked out that way. So I hear what you're saying.
Thank you.
Brian, can I make a comment, not a motion?
Mr. Bennett.
Yeah, first off, Tom, I was not going to vote for that tonight either. And I do want to give kudos to the young lady who sent a very nice email withdrawing that motion or that request. I tend to think that this request came in just because of her request. Again, it's unfortunate, and maybe I'm wrong in that, but I don't really think I'm wrong in that. I think Mr. Disher decided to poke the pig a little bit more here and said, well, if somebody's going to request the street closure, then I'm going to go ahead and request it. Now, Mr. Disher might not have known that the young lady who came to council two weeks ago requesting that did withdraw it and was very nice about withdrawing it. She understood the circumstances that it was creating. So if this motion, if this agenda item was to get a motion, I definitely would be voting no on it, just for principle. And that's my thought, Brian.
Bill, I believe that for the health and safety of the community, we can't have this time, this type of event. Like they said last two weeks, two weeks ago, I would have voted no, and that was specifically because of safety issues, and I believe the same thing with this issue. And the businesses, obviously, Pantos is a good business in the community, they've been here for many years, and we have to support our local businesses, and if it's going to affect his business, we can't allow that.
I was actually one of Pantos' first patriots when they were down here on Main Street when it first opened up.
Cat McCarthy.
I just wanted to add that, like my fellow council members, my intent to table last meeting's proposal for a street closure was about process more so than the proposal. And given what Bruce has said about the CDC, as well as the businesses on the street, it does not seem like something that is in the best interest of our community health and safety. So not for moving a motion forward personally.
And without a motion to bring it to the floor, then we're not going to discuss what we've been discussing. But if there is any question, I can tell you that when we discuss this, this could pose issues because you have a number of streets that are dead ends off of Rotten Avenue and access to those streets would have been problematic for the residents, and in particular, if there was a need for an emergency response. So there is additional considerations that could be taken into account, and we don't need to discuss any further. So we can move on to agenda item number six, which is consideration of a resolution to accept, recognize, and appropriate the following donations to the UCF. There's a donation from Porch Fest for a park improvement amount of three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and twenty cents. We have a motion to consider accepting the donation from Cat McCarthy and then John Bennett with support, discussion. Thank you, Porch Fest. Very good. It was a virtual, was it virtual when it was on the radio? But the event took place, and I think everybody that listened in still enjoyed themselves, looking forward to continuing this annual tradition. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Very good. Number seven, consideration of a resolution to approve the 2020 and 2021 amendments to the municipal cooperative agreement to support the greater Tompkins County municipal health insurance consortium. Motion to consider, John Bennett, and we need a second from Cat McCarthy, discussion.
First off, I wanted to thank the consortium for helping the city of Corlin out for the month of December during these trying times. Many people do not realize it, but the city and the city employees will be saving a little bit of money, which also means that the city taxpayers will be saving some money come the month of December. The consortium has decided to ease some of the billing, to say the least.
The consortium has decided to ease some of the billing, to say the least. So again, to, first off, my thank you to Matt Cook, who is on, who is actually the chair of the finance committee for the consortium, and to the members of the consortium. I've been to numerous consortium meetings. I am always, always taken aback by how well these people know their business, how hard they work, how professional, and more than anything, how caring for all of the employees and all the municipalities that they have as members. So once again, thank you, Tompkins Consortium.
Uh, Matt Cook, can you briefly touch upon the adjustment that was made at the consortium? I believe we may have talked about it at a previous.
I can. We operate under the municipal cooperative agreement, the MCA. In that agreement, which is now 10 years old, it spells out who votes, and that all decisions are made by the board of directors. 10 years ago, that board of directors consisted of us and 13 other, us and 12 other members. So 12 people voted at the annual meetings. That, our membership now is 53. So now we have 53 votes on all matters related to the consortium. It's becoming slightly unwieldy. So a year and a half ago, the consortium created the standing committee, the governance committee, to take a look at how we should be managing, how we should be making our day-to-day decisions. And what came out of that were these changes. And the changes are not extensive, but it does empower the three standing committees, the audit finance committee, the operations committee, and the joint committee, to take on certain authorities and be able to approve at the committee level those things which generally went to the board. In addition to that, the executive committee, which was when it was, consortium was formed, was only of four people, the chair, the vice chair, the chairman, and the executive director. We are expanding that executive committee to 11 people, which will include all the committee chairs, which we, for example, I sit on the executive board, but I do not have voting rights. Under the changes, 11 people will be on the board, the committees, and three at large. They will begin to take on more and more of the monthly decision makings that used to go to the board meetings. Because, like I said, we have 53 members right now. We're not having, we're having problems with quarrels, we're having problems with governing with that many voices. The, under the arrangements, the board of directors will continue to approve the budgets and set the rates. That's not being, that's not being divested from that. So that's the essence of what we're doing. We have to change the MCA every five years. So we're, in 2021, we're up for renewal. And so we are putting forward in the 2020 and the 2021 rewrite of governance changes.
Very good. Any questions for Mac on that? Uh, Mr. Michaels, Tom.
I noticed now, Mac, you've gone to a weighted vote.
Yes.
How's that working out at this point? Or haven't you utilized it yet?
We haven't utilized it yet. The last, last board of directors meeting was the annual meeting, where we operated, and will continue to operate, that the board as a whole will vote up or down on the budget and the premiums. But no, we haven't, we haven't done anything yet on the weighted votes.
Oh, okay.
Selfishly, the city gets more representation under this agreement. We always have one vote as a standing member of the board, but now we will get a second vote in the executive committee that we've never had before.
Okay. Further questions? So the resolution approved the 2021 amendments to municipal cooperative agreement for the Greater Tompkins County Consortium. There's a stack here that is impacted. People are more than welcome to read and feel free to give a call. But suffice to say that our experience with the consortium has been a wonderful one. It's really been a cost avoidance in terms of the increase in healthcare. It's a much more cost efficient, with some minor changes in terms of what benefits we're able to provide. We're still providing a high level of service with a manageable number. I see this as very consistent with some of the changes that we worked through regarding workers' compensation over the last couple of years, where we're getting into a more stable and a productive agreement. So I'll call for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mac. A lot of work goes into that, a lot of behind the scenes, it's great information. Number eight, resolution transfer $5,000 from BS Lane Line to vehicle maintenance to cover rising costs of vehicle repairs. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second, this type of discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Resolution recognize and appropriate $705.2 from Nimer Vehicle Repairs to a vehicle which replaced them to revenue account and transferred to the police department budget line 5402, which is vehicle maintenance offset the cost of repairs to the noted vehicle. Motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Uh, number 10, resolution to recognize and declare use Kenwood NXR 710 VHF police radio repeater and model TK 790 mobile police radios in the possession of the city police department as salvage, and to allow them to be sold to another municipal police agency. Motion to consider. Uh, Bill Carpenter, second, Troy Beckwith, discussion.
Mayor.
Yes.
If Paul, Deputy Chief Paul can give the reasons why it's surplus for the record, that would be appreciated.
Very good. Mr. Sandy. Deputy Chief Sandy.
Now I'm unmuted. Okay. Several years ago, the police department had the VHF radio system, and it was compliant. It was brought up to the new regulation that it was compliant with the narrowband system. However, when the county went to the UHF system, the countywide system, we joined on with them. So for a while, we ran two radios as a backup. For the past several years, due to the functioning and the good reception that we were getting from the county system, the VHF system was redundant, and we had removed it. And it's been sitting dormant for probably five years.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Sandy.
Welcome.
Questions? There are none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Opposed? Yeah, I saw all six. Got to make sure I ask the second question. Number 11, resolution recognizing and accept the proposal from the Ougio Police Department to purchase, and it's the NXR 710 repeater and mobile units, cost of $100 per radio for a total of $1,500. This will replace their outdated and inoperable radio equipment, and to find the receipt, place the funds in the city police department budget line 5402, which is vehicle maintenance. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 12, consideration of resolution to remove all fiscal data pertaining directly to the city's trash removal operations from the general fund to a refuse operations enterprise fund effective January 1, 2021. Let's have a motion to consider, John Bennett and Cat McCarthy, second. Discussion. Mac, would you like to give the quick overview?
Uh, the quick overview is that when the city or a government has an operation such as our trash operation that's primarily dependent upon users' fees to finance, it is better to have that in a standalone fund that operates on the principles that a private sector would do. Currently, our trash fund is in the general fund. It's scattered in the general fund. It, sometimes, like it did last year, it hurts the general fund by being there. Trash last year lost $162,000. That's part of the decline in your general fund balance that our auditors related to you earlier. But more than that, it is that type of activity that can be formed by the private sector. In theory, we are dependent upon fees in order to break even on it. So by moving it into an enterprise fund, it's not only better accounting, but it also gives you the management tools to try to isolate how much we should be charging for this service, should we be doing a service at all. Because it's going to be on the private sector standards as opposed to government standards of accounting.
All right. So by separating it out, we've always talked about how the blue bag, called the blue bag program, how it is meant to be self-sustaining, and this would kind of force it to stand on its own legs. And the benefit to the blue bag program, and we have the questions, is that the cost of the bags, when it's running efficiently and appropriately, it's covering the cost of trash collection and recycling collection. And some years, it's a little tougher. Mac spoke about not being able to balance books with it. Last year, some of that, as you see, increases in fees, be it from the hauler, the tipping fee, or, you know, change to how recycling is done, and we changed how we're doing it to try to offset without having the cost increase. Sometimes, the amount of trash anticipated doesn't come in. But this will require us to be more diligent and potentially adjust blue bag fees more regularly. Any questions and discussion? Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six oh. And I'm looking, our next agenda item, resolution amend, resolution number, and I'm not sure which one it was, that was adopted by the council on August 7 of 2018, transfer $23,000 from funding to the HVAC AC system at City Hall to repair the boiler in armor. Motion to consider. John Bennett, Bill Carpenter, discussion. So we have repair needs for the boiler in the armory, and looking to use money that was appropriated from City Hall years ago to go to that.
Any question, Brian?
Troy.
Was that money that was left over from the project? Is that project completed?
Uh, no, we never did that project.
And this dust for need to be repaired, repaired in place, and repaired and replaced correctly, correct?
The, the City Hall, the City Hall HVAC or the armory?
City Hall.
Uh, City Hall, no. City Hall needs some AC upgrades. The reason that it was, time was of the essence in the first place was we were putting a new roof on City Hall, and the unit in question needed to be removed through the roof. And I really didn't want to put a new roof over something that was pretty obsolete. We got around that and put a door in up on the roof in the penthouse, if you will, through the brick. So if the, if the unit needs some care in the, you know, immediate future, it does not have to be removed through the roof.
Okay.
The repairs to the boiler at the armory, I apologize, they were unforeseen. We have a maintenance company in there, and they alerted me of some problems that, that kind of escaped all of us. And we do not have heat in the building until we make these repairs. We were going to try to wait till like April, but with the decent weather right now, it, it wasn't going to last. We would have probably been without heat over the winter time and trying to make a repair and scramble. It just didn't make a lot of sense.
Thank you. The only other thing, I think we should have the number in there, but.
Thank you to intrepid assistant. The number, agenda item was 193, number 193.
Thank you.
That's question number two. Yeah. Very good. Thank you for asking questions. We had time to catch up on it. John Bennett.
Um, yeah, the council, I can send, I contacted Nick earlier in the day, and he did send me the estimate for the boiler. So what I'll do a little bit later, I meant to earlier, and I forgot. But I'll send everybody on council the estimate for the boiler for the armory.
And it's not going to go over the 23, correct?
No.
Right off, so.
Amazing what responsibilities fall to a deputy mayor. Talking about boiler, folks.
Yeah, old age, it's why I forgot to send it out.
All right. Any further discussion? Oh, Cat McCarthy.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly the clarification, but the funding that was set aside for the HVAC at City Hall, that's been worked around, and that money is not required for that project at this point.
So, yeah, pretty much. What we're going to do, or what we're looking at, and I'll pull all you guys in on it sooner than later. We do have HVAC needs at City Hall, more AC than H, if you will. In the summertime, third floor gets, you know, super hot, and we're going to try to do some things to control that a little bit better. Right now, we only have a one-loop system where you can only cool or heat the whole building. And there are times where the basement needs to be heated, and the upstairs needs to be cooled, mainly your shoulder season, like, like right now, where you're going either into winter or into spring. And we want to make some upgrades. Originally, the reasoning that we wanted to take care of the air handler, like I said before, was because we were putting a new roof over it. And the, it does function and work. For how long, I'm not sure. And parts are kind of scarce, and I really didn't want to have the thing basically fail after a new roof, six months, eight months after a new roof was put over it. And the only way you could get the unit out is to actually remove the new roof. So we have, you're right, we kind of circumvented that by putting a door up on the penthouse where when the unit does need to be replaced, we can get it out without needing to alter the new roof. And we'll go from there. Right now, I don't see that unit being replaced as a priority. I do think that there are HVAC needs at City Hall, but I would say with kind of working around that system, I don't think that that's the right move at the moment.
Thank you.
No, no.
And if that doesn't make sense to you guys, I can, I can put something together via email to explain it a little bit better.
You explained it.
Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Now, agenda item number 14. We've got 14, 15, and 16. We've got 14, 15, and 16, and these are, well, 17 potentially as well. These are all related to the city budget. What I'd like to do is provide a quick overview of the budget process. Council's aware, but it's always good for the general public. So the mayor shall, council honor before October 15 what is called the tentative city budget. So, the budget goes, is developed, comes to the council, and that was sent via email to council last week. Today, we have a formal discussion regarding it. That's the first step. Next step, council shall review and may modify the tentative city budget, and shall, before November 15, approve the document, making it the proposed city budget. So it goes from tentative to proposed. And then, no later than December 1st, the city clerk will publish an anonymized abstract and budget and a notice of the date and time, no later than December 15, for a public hearing on the budget. And then the last major step, after the hearing, but no later than December 31, council may continue to add or subtract to the budget, and by December 31, shall adopt the final city budget. So, in a nutshell, what happens is the budget is developed, and when it comes from department heads and administration to me, it becomes the mayor's budget. I share, I make changes as I see fit, then it comes to the city council. It has come to the council by October 15, and now, at this point, it's on the agenda for a vote, and we actually have three funds, the general fund, wastewater fund, and water fund. That's why there are three items on the agenda. By council voting to accept budget today, essentially, I describe it as moving it from the mayor's desk to the council's desk. Although, having it in your hands makes it on the council's desk. That's the first step. That is not the final approval. You can still make adjustments. As it becomes the proposed city budget, need to have a public hearing at some point, and the public hearing has to be before December 1st. And then, council, we need to have you vote before December 31st. Excuse me, no, later than December 1st would be the publisher of the abstract, and December 15 for a public hearing. So in years past, what we have done is gone a little bit more quickly, but we are pretty much on the timeline for this year. It's been presented to council, and moving forward, council accepts it, then the opportunity typically is there for workshops, and it can be meeting with department heads and discussion, doing a deeper dive with regard to items in the budget. Public hearing, we can have one, we can have multiple public hearings, depending on what council would like to see. So at this point, agenda item number 14, resolution to accept the mayor's 2021 general fund budget as the tentative city budget, tendered and designated, that will make it into the city's proposed budget. Motion to consider. John Bennett and Bill Carpenter, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 And opposed? Cares? Consideration of resolution to accept the mayor's tentative city budget as tendered and designated as the proposed wastewater budget for 2021. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 And opposed? Pass the six oh. And the third fund? Consideration of a resolution to accept the city's tentative water fund budget as tendered and designated as the council's, excuse me, as the city's proposed budget for 2021. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion. All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Cares? Alright, so the, uh, opportunity, before we get to number 17, now maybe a good time, council, we'd like to discuss, pulling out your calendars, I warned you last meeting, and discussing workshops and potential deals. After we talk workshop, actually, while you're getting ready, now is probably the best opportunity for me to, uh, talk a little bit about the budget. Difficult? I, not, hey, we, we can talk all day about the challenges that we're facing through this year. The sewer lateral from my house to the street. So this is a potential significant cost for people. And when we look at people who may be homeowners, or renters who are low mod in terms of income, our supposition is that this is a audience that probably will not do this unless they absolutely have to, because that is a significant cost. However, to keep homes sanitary, to keep pipes flowing appropriately, to limit groundwater runoff into the system, which is also important, we need to do this infrastructure work. And we estimate that we can get up to, over time, 100 or more homes, and we could potentially 100 or more properties that we could help with. Again, we need to not just be able to identify, but we will need property owners to sign off on for the bill, for the city to have the ability to do this. So it's owned by the resident, it's the responsibility of the resident, but we recognize how it ties into the system, and the importance of the system as a whole functioning, not just for the individual homeowner, but all the way through the pipes down to our treatment plan. So we're going to need to do a little bit of a campaign to make sure that we are getting the word out, and that we are helping identify properties that will be appropriate. Properties that the owners qualify, and the infrastructure is in need of the work, and that in and of itself is not a small task. So we're already having internal dialogues about how to do this, but council, we're going to need your help in terms of advertising, asking your neighbors, and promoting this opportunity, because that's what it is. It's an opportunity for major infrastructure work that most people otherwise would have to undertake on their own. Questions regarding the budget overall, before we start talking about workshops and scheduling? Bruce?
It's not a question, I guess, there's much as a comment, I caught that, little, insert there about repairing the lawns, and that gives us several months to figure out what we're gonna do, because that's not gonna go well with people whose lawns have been torn up by the fowls, just to say, well, we're not gonna repair them this year. I, I don't think that's good enough. I think we need to have a little, I understand what he's saying, we're gonna focus on other things, but still, the problem is up the lawns, we've always, you know, done what's right, and, and repaired them, we need to, we need to have a plan.
John Bennett?
Okay, wasn't sure if I was unmuted. No, I agree with Bruce, we're, we're gonna have to come up with something. To clarify what the mayor was saying, though, when we have any of these huge grants that allocate monies toward labor that normally went to contracted companies, but when we do it in-house, that does restrict our labor to doing those specific jobs. And due to the COVID, due to loss of sales tax revenue, one of the ways that we're getting to have our DPW employees survive without us having to do more furloughs is, and by keeping them on the books, is by having them do these jobs and getting paid with this money from these grants. But again, to the downside is then, while they're busy on the Uweko Street job, and possibly often Clinton Ave, with money that we're gonna have for labor for Washington Street and some of those streets, again, that restricts them to doing that work and not other work that we normally would have our DPW workers doing. That's the downside. That's something that we're gonna have to discuss when we're doing the budget sessions.
I, I agree, I, I get that, John. I just bring this up because I, I think, I mean, I have a lot of faith in Nick and Chris, so you're pretty creative and problem solving, not having to know, maybe it's only three lawns we have to work on anyhow, maybe I'm taking too much time for something that's really very insignificant, but, but I heard that comment, and I, I didn't think, for me, it's not quite that simple. We have to try to do something a little differently, because come spring, you know, that's, we're gonna get some phone calls, and people are gonna, probably so, are gonna be upset if, you know, we're not repairing things that we usually do, so, but we have some time to work that out.
Yes, we, we do. On the other hand, I, I will say this for the people of the city of Cortland, and again, too, we're just starting the budget session, what comes out of it right this minute, none of us know. But, again, without knowing the future as of this moment, without knowing what might happen after election day, the possibility down the road of maybe the budget being helped out by some federal funds, I think our residents have to realize that every single thing is up in the air, which might mean that, yes, there might be some services that they've received that they may not receive. And I'm very proud of our population, I'm very proud of the people of the city of Cortland, who totally understood why we cannot open a Whitwire pool this year. Not only due to funding, but because, again, to the health crisis. And again, too, these are all things that we're gonna have to discuss. Trust me, Bruce, I'm the last one that wants to be able to tell somebody, well, this year, that's not gonna happen. We're gonna have to look at things, but again, too, I, I just want everybody to understand exactly how those, that, those grant dollars work, that by not laying off people, we're gonna be able to keep our employees on the job by paying them to do these jobs, but there is a restriction to it. And I think it's much better for everybody to know we're being able to keep employees on the job.
Questions, comments? If you listen to any, well, there's been different budgets put out and reported upon within Cortland County over the last couple of weeks, and you don't have to look very far to see the net impact on other communities as well. But one of the things that I think this really does, we can talk, you know, some of the things, and maybe it's grassy in some of the yard work that needs to get repaired after some plow damage, which is a city responsibility, but we're, we're talking about a minor potential shift in terms of services, maybe it's not right away, as well, it might be something later in terms of when it gets done. But the thing that I would encourage council to continue to accept and work on is the premise that we're, we're not going to squeeze the projects that typically get squeezed, or the departments that typically get squeezed in tough budget years. So when you're doing a budget and you have a bad year, where, where can you cut, where can you save? And we've had these discussions in the past. There's really not many places where you can cut without also cutting services, contracting what we do, what we provide. And you can go department by department. Is there something that we want to change in terms of service provision in police? Is there something we want to change in terms of service provision in fire? Is there something we want to change in terms of service provision in COGS? And as you go over department by department, what we did this past year with COVID, part based upon what we could do, in part, not knowing what was going to happen with funding, everybody on council knows this, but as a reminder to some in the public, we took hits in terms of public works and our youth bureau. And they were significant in terms of financial, and they were significant in terms of service provision. And what I am proud of here is that we are going to continue to provide the services that we said we would. You know, when I asked back in April, hey, do this, and this will give us the best opportunity to come back next year. That alone did not get us here. You know, this, this additional work, and it's going to be a Herculean effort, because it's not going to be just calling people and saying, hey, we're gonna come do your sewer ladder. We're gonna need buy-in, we're gonna need paperwork signed, and we need to do it the time we meant. And without that, we either cut services, or we increase taxes to two and a closer to six, eight, or more percent. So if this is what we want to do, to keep a budget under the 2% cap, and to continue to provide great service in every department, we're, we're going to need to make effort each and every one of us. Workshops. When do we want to meet? Who's got the toughest schedule? I'm looking at Tom Michaels. Let's just hope based upon senior, you've got the most gears here, Tom, what's your travel schedule like?
At some point, I gotta go back down to New York City, I'm hoping to do that first part of November to get that out of the way. The week of the ninth and the week of the 16th, I need to stay in Cortland for work purposes, so, anytime during those two weeks, I'm pretty much open after work.
So the next council meeting would be the third. So Tom's throwing out one, two, three and four weeks from now.
As usual, I'm free anytime. Unless, 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 as I talked to you Sunday, Brian, about certain physical things that might need to be done to my body, unless something comes up, which hopefully not gonna would, won't happen for a few months.
The week of the ninth looks a little more flexible in my schedule.
Is there a desire to start earlier in the week of the ninth, or are we going to start with week of the ninth?
We're good with nine.
Yeah, let's start with a week of the ninth.
Day in the week?
Who's open Monday night?
Are there any conflicts with Monday night? Here we're done. What time?
6:30.
How long we gonna run the meetings? They're not the open end, are they? Well, let's have a time frame here, when we're gonna.
And we're usually done by 10 o'clock, Bruce.
Well, I suggest we start, I suggest we start at nine, though.
Geez, geez, huh, did it last, dude? Didn't we go to two in the morning on top of them?
Yeah.
Generally, Bruce, generally no more than two hours.
6:30 to 8:30 sounds good to me.
Hard cap at 8:30 for the first one?
Yes. That sounds good.
Alright, you wanna set another date and time now?
Yes. Might as well put them on there now, so we can plan. So we get our sleep, yeah?
Same week, later in the week?
We do it Wednesday, same time.
That's, that turns day.
It gives Bruce a day in between to get caught up.
What's that time?
It gives you one day in between to get caught up on your sleep.
Let me check my. Let me check my retirement schedule, see what's going on.
You are correct, though. That is Veterans Day. Would you like to push to Thursday the 12?
Yeah, let's, yes.
Yes. 6:30 again?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And we can, it sounds like we have some time in terms of format. We've got dates and times. If we wanna go department by departments, if there are specific questions you may have, I'll apologize for the format in terms of what is presented. There's a lot of lines and a lot of numbers, which isn't necessarily easy. But the municipal company that we're working with, there was a small glitch this past week. We weren't able to do immediate comparisons of past years to this year. We had to kind of splice things together, so.
Eric, those emails went out with comparison reports at 5:30 today.
So if you check your email, you do have the comparison reports side by side. But we had some difficulty with that. Matt, thank you for getting that out. And that was an external issue that has since been resolved. Okay, the, for anybody who's listening, this is, these are public meetings. And we do announce when we have public meetings, regardless if they're regular, if they're workshops or work sessions. And 6:30 to 8:30, the Zoom link will be the same as this meeting, 892-739-1872. People are more than welcome to attend. There will be an opportunity for a public hearing as well. Council, shall we just schedule the first public hearing for the November 3rd meeting?
Well, this is, this, I have to say, this is newly being, we're meeting on Election Day. That's a pretty big day, especially to this year. So, you know, I, I really, I'm serious about this. It's a election night. If we're gonna have a, a, a meeting, I think, you know, let's keep it short and sweet as far as agenda, Brian. We have, there's a lot of things going on that tonight.
It, it, Brian?
Oh, I, I hear you. The, it's council's meeting. It's council agenda. We've done the meeting on the night in years past. I, I'm not voting early. I'm going, I'm voting on that day and I'll be able to work that in. I know that we all have things that we wanna do and need to do, but council, it's up to you. If you would like to do something different in terms of plans for November 3rd, discuss.
I would like to do something different for November 3rd. But if we, if people, if folks, if my colleagues want to have a meeting, I'll be there. I'm just asking, if we do have a meeting, maybe we do this public hearing and, you know, one or two things and, you know, we don't need to make it a, a three-hour meeting.
So the emphasis on the November 3rd meeting being public hearing here from the public. And let's just call it essential business. That's a recommendation from Bruce. John?
No, no, that's not true, Mayor. My recommendation would be me. Okay, that was Plan B if my colleagues could lay my Plan A.
My bad. All right, let's talk about Plan A. John Bennett, you've got your hands up. Sorry, Bruce.
Yeah, I'm open to changing the date, but then the next agenda item, which I feel is very important that we do discuss, that needs a public hearing too. And that is time-sensitive because that is something that after a public hearing, if we vote to go along with an override, which again, I don't wanna say much now, that's the next agenda item, that notification has to be sent to the state comptroller's office as a law the next day. And generally, sometimes it's one week to three weeks before we hear back from the state, which then can come into a time crunch come December as far as the budget. So whatever we take into account as far as we run it, if we have a meeting in November, the first week, but a different day or a very short meeting, depending on what we decide with the next agenda item, we have to take that into account. That's what we do. Any suggestion? But unlike the mayor, I will be voting early.
All right, there's four more of you. Who wants to weigh in? Phil Carpenter?
I possibly might be working that night. They're expecting some problems on Cornell University campus that night. So I'm probably be working that at night, so I won't be at the meeting.
Good to know. Thank you. Hopefully the concerns are unfounded, but always good to be over-prepared.
Yep.
So do we wanna do a short meeting November 3rd then?
We just had the public hearings, essentially. I can live with that. We, we get those, we have those public hearings. I can live with that.
Yeah.
Is there any other anticipated business that would be essential for that night? I realize it's in advance, so we probably don't have the agenda all together, but.
I'm sure if something pressing came up, the, the mayor worked through that and.
We, we can have the second public hearing for the, the gender neutral law for the second meeting in November, so that we don't need that, that day.
All right, so if it meets with council's approval, we will do our best to keep any potential agenda items to essential, things that are timely in nature. So something may come up in a department, but we'll make sure that you have the information beforehand to answer questions that if there is a need for council to discuss and/or vote, we'll get through it in the time we may. So we're looking at a shorter meeting on the 3rd, correct? Plan B? Very good.
Make that very short meeting. Not a short meeting, Brian. Very short meeting.
Does that mean that we won't have a work report from the fourth ward?
Not only that, but that also means maybe no proclamations.
Oh, good word. Right back at him. I hear you. All right, agenda item number 13, resolution to establish a date, time and method for a public hearing on a local law to permit the city to potentially override the 2021 tax cap. Motion to reconsider, John Bennett. Give us a second. Phil Carpenter in discussion. So I think it's.
Okay, very quickly. If, for everybody out there, for the public and the media, if we vote to override the tax cap, that does not mean that we would actually have a budget which goes above the tax cap. There is procedure that has to be done, as I stated before. The first part would be that there is a public hearing before the vote for that. Then if council does approve the vote to override the tax cap, then that law has to be sent to the state to be filed and to be approved, and then they will notify us back when that's done. Now, the misunderstanding here is the law states 2% tax cap. As of right now, what we, it is looking like what we're gonna be allowed to increase it without going over the tax cap is all of maybe 1.1%. Due to adjustments that was made and the inflation rate, it was at about 1.5 for next year. But because of the pilot agreement with the Friendship House, with revenue coming in from that, that lowers it, as I say, to one, maybe 1.1. And Matt can give you the exact numbers on that. So we have very little wiggle room within the budget without going over the tax cap to begin with. And again, too, this has been an extremely hard year and we have no idea how next year's going to go. So again, I'm not trying to scare people. I'm not putting it out there that you're gonna see a 5% tax increase, 8%, 2% until we get to the budget hearings and we start to discuss things. Only then will we have an idea. Right now, the budget's looking pretty good. But again, this is more of a necessity to do for the procedure. So it's there if by some chance we do have to. As a reminder, generally, every 1% increase in our general fund budget only brings us $100,000 more revenue. That's all I've got to say. Other than I would propose if, if council agrees to this, then yes, I would set the public hearing for November 3rd.
Do we have a motion?
I believe we do. Did we not?
Yes. Bill seconded.
So via Zoom, date and time, November 3rd at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
And would you like that to be before or after public hearings for water, wastewater and the general fund?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, let's go in order then. So November 3rd, the agenda would have before the formal agenda, public hearings for the general fund budget starting at 7:00 PM. Wastewater budget starting as soon as is practical at the conclusion of the general fund budget. And the water fund public hearing starting as soon as is practical at the conclusion of the wastewater fund public hearing. And the fourth would be public hearing regarding a local law to permit the city to override the 2021 tax cap. And that would happen as soon as is practical at the conclusion of the previous three public hearings.
Well, we had a lower on the, yeah, so we might not have to have the public hearing.
Well, for the public hearing, we wanna have the discussion and reschedule. Further discussion. All right, all those in favor of setting the public hearing November 3rd after 7:00 PM, as soon as is practical at the conclusion of the previous three public hearings, please say and wave aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Carries. All right, agenda item number 18, discussion on fees for water sewer bills. And I believe this came about, thank you, Bruce, last council meeting discussion about the potential for waiving late fees, I believe. But Bruce, why don't you take it?
Sure. I, I talked to Matt about this. My original, I sent an email out to people the other December and then that's really a double date in terms of paperwork. But Matt and I talked and he said this would, this would probably work okay if we had a, like, Matt, you can jump in there. I think it was like the 15th, 16th, 18th, or something like that was a cutoff date. My reasoning is because it would give, I mean, like, we've been talking since March. This is such a unique time. And that third water bill is often the toughest one, especially this year, it was so dry and people were watering their gardens and things. And if we gave them a couple more weeks with a penalty, they'd have another paycheck to help pay for their water bill. And, and that was really where I'm coming from, just to try to give people a little break on that third quarter water bill in such a way where we could still get our books taken care of. A lot of people are still gonna pay their water bill. It's not like you're using not pay the water bill. I mean, you know, there's, there's other folks here that are, there's some people that are probably, you know, having, having some difficulties. And so if we could help them out in, in a small way, that was, that was my rationale.
Discussion. So you just wanna do this for the third quarter then, Bruce?
Yep, just the third quarter. Yep, that's it. You know, and, and then the next bill's gonna come in, in 2021 anyhow for them. And typically, it's not as, as large. And I got a couple of phone calls from some people that they get called by surprise and, and, and they were concerned. And that's sort of why, that's why I brought it up as a, as a potential way to try to work with some people.
I think we also might be getting some phone calls from some of these people that are obviously, that everybody knows if you're landlord, that your tenants don't have to pay their bills or anyhow, unfortunately, or they think they don't, that some of these landlords might have some problem with their bills too, but we can discuss that at further time.
Well, I think if we did this, it would be for everybody. I don't think we could, um, you know, I wouldn't, wouldn't hold it to just, on this tone, hold, you know?
We might run into this again, so.
Okay, all right. And I think it is something we may have to discuss later. That's a good point. I was thinking about that.
Sam Purthby?
Um, I mean, I like the idea of trying to help residents out. I think I just wanted to ask, based on either your conversation or from Matt directly, is there any budget implications that we would wanna keep in mind as far as extending, waiving the, the late fee up until that date?
I would say no. No, we just need it done by the 5th. We need, we need to get into our tax bill bill length, which is a re-leveing of all our delinquent sewers and waters. And we need to start at that somewhere after the 15th. But there's no, there would be, whatever it is, the water fund and the sewer fund are strong enough to survive it.
So I would say December 15th then is, that would be my proposal, Matt, that is, Brian, so that, you know, Matt and his crew can get the work done they need to get done. And we still need people, you know, one extra paycheck to help out. Yep.
So third quarter's bills due December 15th?
Without penalty. If it's paid after that, there's gonna have to be a penalty. That's, that's my proposal. Because now I think you get a penalty if you don't pay it by November, if I'm, unless I'm mistaken. So we'll give people a couple more weeks.
All right, so this is a proposal, and I think we need to put that into the form of a resolution. So a resolution to allow city residents, resolution is to allow water and wastewater customers the opportunity to pay bills up until December 15th without a penalty for late fees.
The, the third quarter bill. I'd make it specific to the third quarter bill. Without late fees, yes?
Me seconding Rick. Third quarter. So to allow, resolution to allow water and wastewater customers until December 15th to pay their third quarter bills without a financial penalty.
Yep. Rick, did you have something to add?
Hey, you're muted. Right on mute.
Someone needs to second that motion.
Oh. So, well, first of all, I make sure I'm, understand, Bruce, that was a motion from you, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's the first. There's the motion on the floor and supported by John Bennett. Discussion.
I think we had that.
Yeah. Well, we got a call for it. No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries, 6-0.
Thank you, folks.
Agenda item number 19, political signs and sign regulations. So a brief history of the world. Back when I was on council, this was a topic that got a fair amount of attention. And we actually had a representative from New York Civil Liberties Union, NYCLU, come in and talk to us about what we could and could not do with political signage. And when this issue came forward, we asked Corporation Council to review, and we did. And I don't think there's really been much change in terms, in terms of case law, what we can and cannot do. But Rick, if I'm being correct, please let me know. We. Uh, but Rick, if I'm being correct, please let me know. We cannot limit contents, uh, in terms of messaging. However, we can limit the size of signs and also the quantity. But we cannot restrict political free speech any more than we restrict any other kind of free speech. So for example, you can't say that political signs have to be this big, but you can have real estate signs this big in the same area. How'd I do, Rick?
Uh, good. Uh, time, place and manner is the standard for constitutional review of any political regulations. Uh, there is a, a, a growing, uh, spectrum of how to review what, uh, the number is. Uh, there is certainly a, uh, a control number that, you know, too many is, uh, gets to be, uh, messy. It can get to be distracting for drivers. It can get to be blocking, uh, rights of way and such forth. Uh, for the, for the spectrum, a little more left maybe, uh, uh, is that we should not have any regulations that restrict the ability, uh, for any one resident to support any one candidate. So if we have five candidates this year and we restricted to two, uh, we're potentially limiting three candidates from being supported by that resident. Uh, so it, it, that's sort of the legal spectrum. Uh, where you want to be is up to the council. That's a legislative decision. Uh, both ends are supported legally. Uh, I don't think that we are at all different than many, many others. Uh, but there is a, there is a significant constitutional review that we should not be limiting, uh, signs so that people are restricted in their ability to support every candidate that they want to in a particular political year. Clearly, our position that, uh, that, uh, removing signs, political signs shortly after the, uh, election is supported by every constitutional review, uh, of that. Uh, so that part I'm not worried. Uh, but it really is a legislative decision as to how many and where you want to be on that political spectrum of, uh, of, uh, signs and free speech.
Thanks, Rick.
So the current number is two, and this was a discussion and a decision from a while ago. Uh, the two main criteria in terms of signs and regulations, when we had this discussion in the past, keeping it out of the right of way. So if you have a sidewalk, traditionally, the right of way is the area between the sidewalk and the curb. So signs being set back closer to the homes, uh, and the two big issues being safety and attractiveness, just generally speaking. And I use the example because I've seen this many times where you have a street such as Tompkins, the wind comes out of the west, comes right down, big tractor trailers come down, those signs get picked up, blown out into the streets. And at different times of the year, potentially buried in a snowbank or just out there. And those sharp metal saves can be hazardous. Also, the issue of where those signs are, does it block line of sight? People at an intersection, coming in and out of intersections. Uh, so that's the safety argument that we've had in the past. And then the attractiveness, um, you know, do, do these signs, uh, contribute or are they a detriment in terms of the overall attractiveness of our neighborhoods? So that was the criteria that led us to the two sign limit in pass. But it is up to council to, this is a legislative body. This is a matter of legislation, so it's up to you to decide what you would like to do with this. Are we okay with two, or is there a desire to change the number? And we can.
Well, I mean, somebody else happened. Go ahead, Troy.
I'm sorry. For time, it, it, now, we decide denying time, you know, record relates, really writes the, the new law and everything else, and we only got two weeks left for this year. You say let it go for this year. Personally.
Yes, I, I, that would be, I, I would agree with Troy on that. I would, I would even take it a step further in that. I, I have no problems with the, the mindset, the thought process of taking them out of right of way. I understand that. That makes sense to me. Um, I'm not sure when they decided on two, if, I don't, I'm pretty sure that this wasn't a, a thought. But one of the things about signs, folks, is that for those of us that don't have a lot of money to contribute to candidates to show our support, one of the cheapest ways we can show our support for our candidates is with a political sign on our lawn. It, it, it's often, they're free as far as the, the, the homeowner is concerned. They're given to, uh, folks by the candidates. Uh, you can go online if you want to buy fancier ones, and those aren't horribly expensive. And I don't, I don't think we should cut that avenue off to people to be able to express themselves in a very cheap formal way of how they feel about, um, their political views, if they want to express those. It's, I, I heard earlier about, you know, First Amendment, you have to, um, you know, there should be a, a real reason why we want to wade into that space. I just don't think there's a compelling reason why we want to wade into that space. I understand people's thoughts about aesthetics, and I'm the last person to speak to aesthetics. Just ask my wife. I, I have a horrible sense of that. But as someone that has been involved in, in the, um, social studies and teaching and being involved in politics for much of my life, even as a kid, to me, I like what I see about six signs on a lawn. I think that looks really cool. I'm thinking, this is a great country. That person gets to put who they want to be elected, a sign on their lawn, and there's no repercussions. Um, so, but I, I can see why other people might disagree with that. But Troy is also right. And, and the other thing is, these signs are coming down in a couple of weeks. You know, they're all, they're all going to be gone in a few weeks. So those are my views. That's why I wanted to bring this up. I got some calls on it. And for me, it's a, it's a First Amendment in a way for, for people that don't have a lot of money to donate to campaigns, can show their support in a very economical manner.
John Bennett.
I personally, well, I personally don't like them. I don't have a problem with more than two signs. Uh, again, as long as they're not in the right of way, and yes, I live on Tompkins Street, so yes, in the past, I have seen them out in the street. I've seen them in snowbanks. Um, more often than not, that might be from kids yanking them out on the phone. Um, I really don't see many in the right of way anymore. Um, so I think most of our public understands that. My main concern is as long as they're down, they're off, they're pulled out, what is it? They have 30 days until, 30 days after the election to remove them? I think that's part of the law too.
I believe that's something we should look at too, down the road before the, the next year's election for sure, but that, that should be changed as well personally. We can talk about that later. We don't need to talk about that.
That's, that's, that's my main concern. If somebody wants to, you know, if we have an election, again, to every four years or every two years between Congress, president, our own elections, so be it. If there's more than two signs, I have no problem with that.
So we got to address the issue right now. These people are getting citations, the court offices on their case. Obviously, they're doing their job. Um, we need to address that. We're going to let it go. People got five signs this year. We're going to let it go. They got to, you know, notify to quit citing people. I mean, we got to determine all this tonight.
Uh, yeah, Troy, I, I think, uh, our zoning officer might have more important things to do.
Rick, did you want to say something?
Oh, it was addressed, but thank you.
Oh, okay.
I do have a question for you, Rick. In terms of enforcement, uh, this is on the books. What, um, would it take to potentially essentially suspend it and say we're not going to enforce?
Yeah, the, the practicality of it. Uh, we have a two-step process before anything goes to court or there's any penalties. The first step is a notice of violation. That's what, uh, the zoning officer has sent out. It gives you 30 days, uh, to comply. Uh, if it's not complied with within the 30 days, then we go with the, uh, with any sort of court process. Once we get to the court process, there's a, there's a significant amount of discretion in how we carry it out after that. But I think that in, that if the council is, uh, accepting of this, that some direction to the zoning officer, uh, that not to, not to, to force the issue after the notice of violation, uh, is an appropriate way of handling it. We're certainly not subject to any sort of penalties because we're not enforcing political sign rules to, you know, terrible.
So what's the desire of council?
Well, I'd take it from a Brett standpoint, Troy's, what Troy and Rick spoke to makes the most sense for now. And then I guess we pick this up later in terms of officially, if we decide we formally want to change, um, the two sign limit, but not, I don't think we want to do that tonight. So I think Troy and Rick have laid out a plan where we can just let people have their signs. The election is going to be over in two weeks. They have to come down within a certain number of days and, you know, this, this becomes an unissue.
Yeah, I think we need to be clear about, uh, you know, uh, the, the, presently, it doesn't talk about, uh, political signs in the right of way. Uh, I think I would add that as a regulation because that's a time, place, manner type regulation. I think we're well within it. Uh, but you do need to consider signs, uh, number of signs, whether you got a wide limit to one per candidate or no limit at all. But those are the kind of considerations that I think that you need to have.
You mean going forward, not necessarily tonight?
Oh, absolutely, going forward, not tonight.
Okay, yeah, okay.
All right, so who would like to take the lead in terms of making a recommendation back to council for these potential changes?
You mean, go ahead, Troy.
Oh, you got a question, Bruce?
Well, I wasn't sure what Brian's, I don't know what you're saying there, Mary. You got, you confused me. Let's stay one thing at a time. Are we going to go ahead with Rick and Troy's suggestion going forward? Do we do that first?
So the, uh, okay, so the desire is to no longer issue citations or notices for, um, a violation in terms of the two sign code, correct?
In people's lawns. They still should keep them out of the right of way. I don't have a problem with that part. So, you know, that's.
Absolutely. I agree with Bruce on that.
Okay, so keep them out of the right of ways, but people can have more than two?
Yeah, I think that's how we should proceed. That's, that's the first thing I would like us to wrap up.
Okay, so the resolution to include only, resolution to allow more than two political signs on a property from the.
No, Matt, hold on. No, I guess I'm not being very clear tonight. What I'd like to do right now is just follow what Troy and Rick said is we just stop issuing the violations, the citations, whatever it's called. We just cease that and just let people keep their lawn, their signs in their lawns. If they're in the right of way, then zoning can go and talk to them because that's different. But if they want to put 101 signs in their lawn, we don't, we're okay with that. And we're still going to enforce that they have to be removed, I think it's 30 days after the election. The only thing I want to go forward with is stop citing, cite, stop citing people for having more than two political signs in their lawn. That's what I want us to do first. That's, is, is, is that clear? I'm not sure if I'm making that clear.
Very good. So cease and desist from issuing citations or violations of having more than two signs?
Yes, in their lawn.
In their lawn.
Yes, yes.
All right, straw poll. How many people agree?
Aye.
Very good. All right, so that, uh, I will relay that to our court officer. Any further discussion regarding, uh, political signs?
No, we'll get it on.
Go ahead, Troy.
I just meant to say, we just make sure we get it on the agenda the first of the year when we get done with the budget stuff. We got more time to address it.
Yes, I'd be happy to help, help that.
That was going to be the question I was asking earlier, was who would like to take the lead to potentially make recommendations regarding changes to the ordinance? Rick, did you have your hand up?
I'd be glad to take the lead on that and, uh, tip them on a calendar for the first of the year to make some recommendations.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
And then the question, uh, that has come forward in terms of if there's been citations issued, what is the, um, path forward here?
The zoning officer will be instructed not to issue court appearance tickets and that the notice of violation simply expires.
Very good.
Thanks, Rick. Halloween. Asked. Well, given what's happened in the last two weeks, I'm not even going to propose that people have Halloween in the afternoon. I mean, it's just the numbers have just exploded in two weeks from where we were. And especially after I look at the CDC's guidelines, that how the, I mean, parents can do what they want to do for sure, but, um, I think this is a year where we have to get creative and maybe have trick or treating with grandpa or something like that, or a couple family members that are all getting together anyhow. And that's just my suggestion. I, a couple of weeks ago, I thought maybe daylight might work, but I don't even, I wouldn't even go forward with that now after I saw where we're at as a community with the COVID numbers being so high.
Why do a few areas do this trunk and treating where you go into a parking lot? I don't know if that's done around Corlin at, at all.
You know, even that was, uh, not, even the CDC says that wasn't a good idea. They did not, they, those, both of those, if you go to the CDC, if you go to the CDC site and click on Halloween, and I just checked on it, it was updated, it was the 14th. I didn't check on it today. They have activities today. They have low risk, medium risk and high risk. And I, I think the trunk, trick or, that trunk idea was even that was a high risk because people are going to be.
I, yeah, I, because I actually emailed out to everybody the C2C recommendations to wear. Yeah, they say kids should still have to wear a mask over the mouth and nose. The Halloween mask doesn't cut it. Nobody should be handing candy out. It should be just in a bowl or a bag. Um, but yeah, I'm with you, Bruce. If I, if I had young kids home, I would not be taking them out. You know, so. I, I, there's a way we can stop anybody from taking their kids out. All we can do is hope that, uh, they abide by social distancing and that they have their kids wearing a mask, um, and, and be as careful as they can.
Yeah.
It's been given.
Well, just to, just to add to that, um, I'm thinking that, uh, you know, there's going to be some residents that wish not to participate. And if they don't have their lights on, I, I'd like to see those houses, uh, added that, so that they, uh, they don't have to, uh, come to the door. They should have liked by the residents' wishes.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
All right, so the recommendation going forward to the general public is to follow the, uh, CDC guidelines if people are participating and that we continue to encourage people, as every year, to respect the rights of people who are not participating. If you don't see a light on, making it obvious that somebody is looking to participate, then, uh, don't, don't ring the bell, don't look.
Yeah, that's for the last hundred years. If the light's not on, don't go to the door.
Reimburse.
Now, is the newspaper going to publish something regarding our wishes tonight?
Well, that's the beauty of having this discussion in public is that hopefully not just the paper, but all the, uh, sources of news that people get it from. Um, people get the news that will hopefully be covered tomorrow. And we can also push this out on social media on our own. But it works really well for at least one electorate.
Yeah, I think, man, we could put that on our own website that, that, you know, we're recommending that people follow the CDC guidelines for Halloween.
Right.
We could put that on our front page and we'll link to the CDC Halloween guideline page.
My main concern is, and again, I have a lot of faith in, in the public here in the city of Corlin. But Halloween is on a Saturday, and all anybody needs to know is for years past, when Halloween was either a Friday night or a Saturday night, usually that meant one long weekend with a student. So I have a lot more concern about the students, um, jampacking into downtown or doing their best to jam pack. house parties, that, that's where my real concern is. I can only hope that, and again, I, I didn't mean to ask Fred Pierce about that, if they were going to talk to their students about Halloween. But I have quite a bit of concern about Halloween night and students.
I think we all do John.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just hope that they restore some faith into my thinking, I, I mean, I just. And I, I would hope the locations downtown, and again, I have not heard anything bad about any of our establishments downtown. So I have to believe that they are all abiding by by the capacity rules. So I, you know, I don't want to come across that I'm finding fault with anybody down there. I would just hope that they make sure Halloween night that they, they abide by the best that they can too. But that might not be a bad thing to ask, you know, Chief Catalano, what his plans might be as far as keeping an eye out on things for Halloween night.
He still on?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if he was on tonight at all yet.
Yeah, there he is.
First, I've never, I never go away, I'm always here. I, I hear your concerns John, but we've, we've not really come across any problems with any of the businesses downtown that cater to evening time festivities. They've, they've, they've been in compliance as far as numbers go. And, you know, really right now, we're having a hard time finding any big student gatherings on the weekend as it is. I don't know what Halloween will bring, but we have been actively looking and getting the word out and making arrests if necessary. But again, the level that we're dealing with at college right now is nowhere near where, where it's been in the past. And you have to actually look for some violations now.
Well, I guess that's the one upside to this, huh? It's not the way you want to have the upside, but I guess it's our one, one good upside.
Yeah, but we, we're keeping an eye on it like we always do and like I said, the, the downtown businesses, all the businesses have been in compliance when we checked them.
Good.
They have a lot of stake, they have a lot of stake to lose if they, if they don't, so.
Yes, I do. I, I wasn't implying, if anyone are listening, I wasn't implying that you haven't. When I've walked through downtown, I, I'm seeing everything done very, very well. So, you know, my hands are off to everybody downtown.
Very good, no, I think the message is continuing through in terms of what is expected. And it's not just any one segment of the population, there's a lot of people that get excited about any holiday, including Halloween, and we ask everybody to maintain the same decorum that we're expecting every other day. Next agenda item, I had opportunity for discussion regarding rules of order for these Zoom calls. So we've not encountered any major concerns, but it's a council desire to make sure that we are asking people to sign in with a name. You know, we talked about the expectation that when people speak, if they get the opportunity for public comments that they're going to use their video in addition to the microphone.
And, and the time limit? I could hear what you were saying Rick.
I would be it into all of you.
Do we have a general expectation that people who are logging on directly to the meeting are presenting themselves as themselves? Are we okay with device names or other things being monikers?
I personally think they should be on there live. Facial expressions are worth a thousand words.
When they're talking, but if somebody is coming to the council meeting to listen, like right.
That's fine, there's lots of people on there that are just listening.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing in the regular meetings, but you see them, but you don't always know where everybody is. So yeah, I agree with Troy.
All right, further discussion, I'm going to try to move us along a little bit more quickly.
Yeah, we got two things left.
Yes, and I've asked for a guest speaker for number 22. So the Corlin Forward, we've had some good discussions. One of those discussions has evolved into a potential campaign for the community. And we know that there's been a lot of angst and people are under more pressure than normal. And the idea is to talk about the word empathy and what it takes for a community to be successful with regard to having and expressing empathy for other people in the community. So I'd like to sit the floor to Christina Piri, Christina, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you so much for having me this evening. So through our discussions at Corlin Forward, we seem to be, one thing I'm loving seeing here and I want to commend the council for is their willingness to be speaking with their constituents and also listening to the stories and what their constituents are telling them. And I have seen a huge change in council as it was from the council that I first started attending more meetings back in June to the council from now. So I wanted to commend all of you on that and I appreciate your hard work and your constituents that I continue to talk to also appreciate it and also notice it. So empathy is basically the idea of being able to identify with, think about and put yourself in the shoes of someone else to see what their perspectives may be. And empathy fuels connection, which right now in this age of COVID, when we are going in, we, when we are headed inside, it's also headed into wintertime. You know, connection can be really hard to come by. So in speaking about this, we thought about a social media campaign coming out of Corlin Forward and the mayor's office completely focused on the idea of empathy. Now, it can be kind of a big term, it involves a lot of different working parts. And so that's why what we'd like to do is have kind of a weekly, every week would look somewhat the same. We would be working on what emotions and feelings are, how we identify those, imagining what it's like to be in somebody else's shoes and giving other people an opportunity to share their stories via social media platforms. Gratefulness would line up with the week of Thanksgiving, things like vulnerability, what does empathy look like to you? Nonviolent communication. And then lastly, taking empathy into the new year and what that looks like for us as both individuals in Corlin, for our family units in Corlin and also as a community, what we want to bring into the new year. I did leave out a couple of little topics in there because we're still kind of solidifying those, but the plan would be to run this campaign from November 1st all the way through December 31st. It would be a nine week campaign and there would be different social media graphics as well as virtual participatory contests. I'm going to be working with April to talk with some local businesses to hopefully find some incentives to involve families and families and children and adults in getting involved with what empathy looks like for them and their family and how we in Corlin can cultivate a community of empathy, connection and support for one another because that's how we can build a really good foundation to go into the new year and hopefully come out of COVID stronger and more connected.
Very good. Christina, thank you, that was a very excellent quick summary. Council questions directly for Christina.
All right, go ahead, go ahead Cap.
I just wanted to say thank you to Christina and the folks that have been working on that. I think it, it sounds really exciting to, to see a way they engage with people and help us in our community as a whole.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm all over the concept, can you just take two minutes to tell me what, what that would look like? Are you talking about you having like a weekly meeting where people check in and you go sort of through the, through the word of the week, so to speak, or the, the feelings of the week? I mean, I, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how this is going to play out, that's all, I'm just, I can't get it restraining my mind.
No, that's, that's fine, it was a very, very brief summary of a very big idea. So what we're thinking right now, and I am absolutely open to suggestions, so please feel free. K W F U R I at gmail dot com, you're more than welcome to email me ideas if you have them. Basically, it would be that every week has a word or a concept that we're working around. On Mondays, we would introduce that word, what it means. It would probably be like an infographic, so a picture with some words on it and then an explanation in the caption. Tuesday, there would be some sort of, you know, for your emotions and feelings, it might be something like for children, draw a picture of you feeling and, and tell me what you're feeling in the picture. So it's an anger picture, it's a happy picture, it's a sad picture, they get entered into a drawing at the end of the week. That would be followed via using hashtags. Like Corlin cultivates empathy or something like that, that would tie all of this together so we could go search it later. On Wednesdays, we would hopefully have a short video of an elected official or someone in Corlin that is recognizable, the mayor, the police chief, et cetera, council members, telling us what that word means or looks like for you. Thursday, we would kind of drag the idea home. Friday, we would have another infographic that has an assignment for the weekend as well as like, show us how you're doing this at your house. Again, that would be a picture that, that they could upload to social media and use a hashtag so that people would then see it. And then over the weekend, it would kind of be a chance to repost some of what people are doing, highlight what's going on in the community and also get, you know, rev up for the next week's thing.
So this be like a, like a Facebook page type thing, is that how people interact and log into a Facebook page or? Like you said, you're going to put the word out there, I'm not sure what that meant, how do you do that?
So I think right now, what we're planning on using is we're planning on utilizing Instagram and Facebook as our two biggest platforms. And then people would be able to interact on those two spaces.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So let me say that I'd like to be able to demonstrate my support. So as this goes forward, I'm going to plan on my social media to push and promote the word of the week and put it out there. And also try to emulate what we're talking about. So as Christina talks about empathy, how do other people, you know, sometimes we say something and how we intend it isn't always how it's received. So the week that we start this, that might be something that I personally focus on, hey, before I say this, maybe I need to think a little bit more about how that might be received. And on top of that, Corlin Forward has had several meetings and it is now officially a, on social media on Facebook, a group, an opportunity, and it is going to be public, we're going to restrict in terms of access, I'm going to be the administrator, but I'm encouraging people, if you are concerned about the community and you are looking to help grow positivity and work on ways that we can be stronger together. We want to give people another avenue to hear about ideas and learn about the great things that are happening in our community. So Corlin Forward with an exclamation point after forward, search for it on Facebook. The group is just starting and we are going to have an opportunity to continue spread some positivity at a time when I think everybody can use a little bit of a boost some days more than others. Any other questions? We'll be talking more about this and trying to promote, but the concept is very basic, you know, we're talking about a sense of community and how do we continue to build that especially during stressful times? So Christina, thank you for the work that you and April put into this, looking forward to learning more about it and working with you on it.
Yeah, thank you Christina.
Thank you, I'm excited to see what, what we can do with this, so thank you for the opportunity.
And our final official agenda item, COVID-19 in response, what are we doing, what's going on? So it's been referred to a couple of times, there's been different discussions today and very fast paced. Unfortunately, I understand the governor was on today at a press conference, I was unable unfortunately to do that yet because I was up at SUNY Corlin's meeting with the administration, not just from SUNY Corlin, but also the chancellor was in town with several others and this included community members. Our very own police chief Catalano was present, as was the interim director for public health, Lisa Perpetti. And there was a longer discussion before the press conference and there was a lot of great feedback and discussion about what is happening in terms of the increase at the college and then what are the steps being taken to mitigate that? Obviously, we heard from Mr. Pierce earlier, a significant increase in testing, the expectations are out there. Students have been sanctioned, sent home, more than just a punishment of doing this or doing that. But the inability to continue their studies is a fairly harsh sanction, both financially and regarding their future education. And at the meeting, I did bring forward the concern in terms of the community as a whole. So we're seeing a high level of testing being done with students, faculty and staff on campus. And over the last week, well, last week I started asking the question, what do we need to do to test regularly our uniforms public servants, police and fire in particular? Because anytime there is a call, and it's gotten to the point now where it's difficult to know if they may be exposed on any one call. So regular testing, in my mind, makes a lot of sense. But there's been some obstacles because right now to do regular testing, you either need a prescription from the doctor, the doctor has to advise, or have some symptoms or known exposure to somebody you know. And we have a limit in terms of capacity burden. Our local provider is doing a wonderful job in terms of testing, Dr. Corlin, but they are limited right now in terms of capacity based upon them being a private provider. So as we've looked around and we've asked, I know that some counties are doing mobile testing sites. Basically, they pull up and people can go and get tested. Tompkins County to the west has been doing for the past five weeks or longer testing for the general public. I think you might have to make an appointment, but it is free and open to anyone. People can go and get tested. There's been discussion and I'm under the impression that in addition to the general public in Anandaga, there is testing, Anandaga County, there is testing taking place in some of the schools as well. And it's being worked with and through Anandaga County. So at the meeting today, part of the discussion was, okay, if we're doing something very well in one segment of our community, how can we do more? And make sure that we are targeted throughout our community. So we're experiencing a little bit of stress in terms of state government because with the school districts doing learn in place, and I'm talking K through 12. And I'll give you the example, our 12 year old is home and our 12 year old is pretty self sufficient. So there's not a lot of direction, you don't have to sit and watch every second. But if I had a six year old or an eight year old, I would not be able to go to work and leave my six or my eight year old home. And we have a couple of employees who this has negatively impacted here in city government. And if it's happening here, I know it's happening in private industry and it's probably happening for other nonprofits and other levels of government. So now what happens when in addition to our kids being out of school, we also have the issue of people making a choice, I'm either going to stay home and take care of my kid or go to work. And there's no choice, people need to take care of their families first and that's going to create other issues. Now, we've got some people and the city is a great example because we do have some people that can work from home. And I think most people will tell you when you have children, working from home is not as productive all the time as actually being able to be present at work because you're splitting your attention. So we have people that can do it, but it's difficult. But I don't know how we put out a fire or how we arrest a criminal or how we pave a road or plow a road from home. And we have people that some might be able to do some things at home, but not everybody can, not every job allows that to happen. Not every job allows that to happen. And this is true throughout our community. So we, we need widespread community testing. We, we can't depend on one segment of our population. In terms of what's happening at the college, it's good, it's going to benefit all of us, but we need more. So this went forward to the chancellor and to his staff. They're going back to the state and they're going to see if they can help us by pulling in additional state resources in terms of the test. My thought was the ability to test at the public schools, if not just to test the kids. And if we can test kids, you're probably going to know if you're concerned about mom or dad. And part of my concern is that if a child has it or is in school, that's where you could get the most spread. And when I say schools, I'm also including daycares. Because we can sometimes consider them separate, but daycares are essentially early learning and we have the same risk of exposure. And the fact that many younger community members are asymptomatic is more problematic. Or maybe it's just a little bit of a sniffing. You know, a child is less likely to even notice that sniffing. So my hope is that we can hopefully see and hear a step in the direction of more testing throughout our community. So we've been making some calls from the city, trying to reach out, not just within our county, but beyond, not at the, uh, the state level. Also trying to learn a little bit more from FEMA, what all this entails. Because it also came to my attention, and I don't know if it still applies, but for a period of time FEMA either is or was reimbursing testing up to 75% of the cost. So here's what they're doing in Tompkins County. Testing is offered for everybody. The county is granting the money, they're covering the cost. And FEMA has committed to reimbursing 75% of that total cost. And the state has verbally committed to reimbursing half of, or 12.5% of that total cost. So conversations that I have had with a couple of people at the county, and again today with the chancellor and some of his staff, hey, we need testing. It's two things. We're hearing this all over. We need a lot of testing and we need to contact tracing. And I believe that the conversation today will hopefully be very productive in terms of pushing that along. Uh, I'm going to continue to have conversations locally with some of our other elected leaders to see what it's going to take for us to get an, and increase and greater opportunity for people to get tested. So, you know, I'm hearing about rapid tests. October 9th, the governor said every county will have the opportunity for rapid testing. And I look forward to hearing from the county what that will look like. Because every county will have that opportunity. I know that there's rapid testing in some other municipalities throughout our state. So I look forward to hearing what that's going to look like here. And I think we need to have more discussions about, okay, what are the other things that we can do? And the more that we are having these discussions publicly, then the more ideas will come forward in terms of how to do this. I know one of the obstacles that has been expressed is, okay, how do you pay for this? How do you pay for the testing? How do you cover these costs? Well, I, I don't see how you don't pay for this, how you don't cover this. When you start looking at the priority list, the potential impact of not doing testing, of not doing contact tracing, we, we've seen that in other parts of our state and in other communities throughout the country. So I'm of the mind that in terms of the city, we need to encourage an increase in testing and encourage, uh, the contact tracing to continue to be thorough. And people need to adhere to it. So if you think you are sick, it might just be the sniffles, but it could be more. You should be getting tested. You should essentially figure out how to quarantine or isolate yourself from other people until you're tested and you have the results. And if that's five days or seven days, so be it. Make that decision and do your best to stick to it. And hopefully with the rapid testing, we'll get to the point where we are not looking at five days or seven days, but we are seeing quicker turnaround. I'm curious, counsel, your thoughts in terms of the importance of testing? And what can we do? What do we need to do to try to get more testing in Cortland County? Because right now, as a city, as a municipality, we do not have access or the opportunity. We're waiting and listening and trying to work with other community partners.
Well, Mayor, uh, we need to get our county officials on board, uh, so that, uh, the health department has the necessary staffing to, uh, allow this to happen. And I think between you and me that, uh, they don't currently have that kind of staffing available right now.
You know, Mayor, I, everything you said about testing is, I agree with that 100% and the, and the contact tracing, but people still have to do simple things. I'm hearing this phrase, uh, COVID fatigue, I think it's called. I, I, you know, the people are just tired of wearing a mask, and I get that, but if people do simple things like wear a mask, wash their hands, keep six feet away from people, don't go in large crowds. I mean, that in itself, that was how New York State months ago bent the curve. It wasn't mask testing, it was those simple things that, that got that virus under control. And I think not wearing these masks and, and keeping our distance and starting to attend larger gatherings is one of the reasons that the virus is creeping back up again. And, uh, you know, I think we as leaders all have to do a better job, myself included, somehow communicate to people that, this isn't a political statement. This is, this is a medical, scientific, uh, statement. You know, you follow the science. And, um, that's part of the problem. So I don't, I'm not sure exactly what we all do, but I'm, you know, maybe, maybe we all show up at an activity and we all have a mask on. So people say, hey, you know, it's important to wear the mask. And, uh, we need people doing that. And I'm hearing anecdotally that some of these rising cases are some people, you know, going to small park parties. They're not going to big gatherings. They go to maybe six or seven people and a birthday party and somebody is asymptomatic and spreads the COVID virus. And so there's, that stuff, people have to watch out for that stuff. It's not all college kids. If you go to Home and, and Cortland's school website, you'll see that it's infiltrating the schools. And, and so it is a real problem. It is a real issue. And you're right about the testing. But I, I'm going to say this one more time, these masks are really important. You, you, it's not necessarily maybe saving your life, but you save somebody else's if you're asymptomatic because you're less likely to infect somebody else. And if they wear it, they're less likely to infect me.
I agree with Bruce that, uh, masking and hand washing and all of that is very important. The one thing I'll add to the COVID fatigue and the increases, the weather outside is also getting colder. And so I think you're seeing people move indoors more. And whereas it's much easier to social distance outside and still see people with a safe distance and with good airflow, when you're moving inside, that changes the dynamic. So I do think there is need for, uh, testing. I think that there's, that's been proven as something that also helps communities really keep an eye on some cases and, and continue to monitor and keep them, um, as low as possible. So I like the idea that, you know, we're talking about partnering with other, other entities locally because I think that is something that helps move this forward and, you know, I think this is a conversation that needs to keep continuing.
So in terms of passing the message along, uh, would counsel be open to a potential resolution? Here, here's a rough draft. The City of Cortland Common Council encourages Cortland County, uh, to increase the availability of free or low-cost testing for members of the general public in Cortland County. COVID-19 testing with the intention of reducing the risk of transmission for the general public.
Definitely a start.
Wouldn't only want to start with our first responders? Well, forgetting everyone that will include first responders.
I would have said the teachers too, but it looks like, you know, the schools are going remote learning. So I mean, those are all those individuals, the, the, the essential work workers. The folks that every day, you know, making sure that we can get our groceries and, and those kinds of things. Those, those folks all should be, in my mind, they should be at the head of the line.
And if we're doing mass testing, if we were testing throughout the community, we would be getting everybody much more quickly. And, uh, yeah, it's, the, the, our school districts are not all remote permanently. You know, it's through this Friday in terms of the City of Cortland District, but it is K through 12. Good news that we did hear from an epidemiologist who works at SUNY Cortland, I believe in the biology department, was that Cortland does not have any known cases of disease transmission during class time, and that seems to be true for colleges throughout the country. Instructional periods have not resulted in cases at collegiate level. And the hope is that that could potentially be the same thing for younger students. I mean, the caveat being student to student as opposed to the teacher to students. So is there a desire to pass along a formal message to our legislators and to others? We feel strongly that there should be an increase in testing in our county.
Very good.
Yes.
All right. So I'll read it again and I'll ask for a motion to consider. The City of Cortland Common Council encourages Cortland County to increase the availability of free or low-cost testing for COVID-19 to, uh, members of the general public with the intention of decreasing the risk of transmission. So any, anything that you would like to change with regard to that before I ask for a motion to consider?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to consider. Try, we have a second. John Bennett. Okay, discussion. Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And oppose. Carers. I, I will say that, uh, social media has been a double-edged sword in terms of, you know, when we're talking about, we're moving on to another topic here. The empathy campaign and how people are acting and interacting. And it has been in a number of cases, a source event made. Uh, just prior to this meeting, I did observe, or a, yeah, I think it was just prior to this meeting, a social media post about a concern about a local business. Instead of posting social media, if you contact directly myself, the police department, code department, the health department, bring it directly to us, if it's in the city, and we will deal with it directly. If there are issues in terms of over occupancy, if there are issues with regard to, social distancing at a business or another property, bring it to us. Because when it goes out on social media eventually, it may get to us. But a direct line of communication works a lot better. And if you're not familiar with the city phone number, 753-0872, um, do it on social media. You know, instead of posting it publicly, send it to me, send it to somebody else. Hey, if we don't get to it in a day or so, you're seeing the same issue, then get back to us, but, or maybe then post it publicly, but, uh, it's increasing agitation for some people in the community. It's like, well, this is going on and the message could spread everywhere. And we don't have the opportunity to try to work on it until after other people have gotten concerned about it. Whereas if you hear about it right away, we can take care of it. Tom Michaels, you had something?
Yes, uh, just, um, one last, uh, request. We had an officer of the courts that passed yesterday. This individual not only worked for the county court system, but also had filled into the city court system in a matter of, uh, uh, several occasions. And, uh, Carl had also, uh, was a sheriff's officer who had worked for the sheriff's department for 20 years. And, uh, he had retired from that and moved on to become a, a court officer for over 22 years. And, uh, my, my request is to have the city's flag lowered to half-mast in honor of his passing. Uh, the county has already, uh, lowered theirs, uh, half-mast.
Very good. Counsel, any objection? And, uh, I believe it would be appropriate for us to entertain a moment of silence for him.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Let's observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, is there any other business to come before counsel this evening? Hearing none. Uh, last, if, is there anybody that did not have the opportunity for public comment that would like to do so at this point? Into the group chat. Hearing none, seeing none. And at this point, we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Cap McCarthy, do we have a second? Nobody? Nobody. Who's try? Second from try. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Have a great evening. Yep.
Stay safe.